Alright, everybody, we're gonna get started here in just a few minutes. Well, that worked really well. Thank you, everyone, thank you all for coming. I'm gonna go ahead and call this, this meeting to order. My name is Derek Rooney. I am a local government attorney with the firm of Gray Robinson. I have been practicing in local government for the last 20 years. I've handled a number of these Chapter 164 disputes, as well as multiple other mediations between local governments, public and their neighbors, especially involving high stakes issues that involve things like projects, development behind homes. This will be the first time I've dealt with an elementary school. And I can imagine that in this room, there are a lot of high feelings as a result, because children are always a very high priority. And if you'd all just bear with me for a little bit, I'm going to go through a couple of steps here and talk about what the process is today. And a lot of this will be mainly for the public. Both parties, the town and the district, represented by competent counsel of no doubt, walk them through this process in great detail and what's expected of them. But for, for all those who've come from the beach or from the county to, to sit in and participate in this process, this is probably very alien to you, so I want to make sure that I lay out what the process is, what you can expect out of this process, and what your role will be. So, the first thing I want to discuss is what this process is. Chapter 164 Florida statutes is an alternative dispute resolution process. Can everyone hear me out there? Okay, just want to make sure, thank you. And what that means is when, when, just like when two parties, private parties get into a dispute, there's a possibility for mediation and solutions. When it comes to the government and taxpayer money is involved, the Florida legislature found that it would be very helpful for local governments not to get into battles with one another without first going through those, those mediation steps at the, at the front end and avoiding the delay in cost and uncertainty associated with litigation. So, this process calls for three steps, and we're at the first step of that. The first step is a public meeting, it's called the conflict assessment stage. And so, what today is going to happen is, the agenda is going to be after my introductions, the town and then the district will have opening statements. Those opening statements are designed to lay out the issues involved in today's hearing. This hearing is not a legal proceeding, it's not an arbitration, it's not even truly a mediation. It is a phase that we go through to identify what the issues are and start to come up with possible resolutions. And so, a lot of you will be sitting here that will be upset about that, you're hoping for a, to walk out of here with a complete solution. That's not gonna happen. The issues, as I understand them, are very complicated. There are major financial issues, there are major technical issues. There are, these kind of issues are not the kind of things that can be set and resolved in a group setting like this. It's gonna take many follow-up meetings. But my hope is that today, we can identify the issues, we can listen to each other, and listen to understand, not listen to, to respond. And through that understanding, we can find the areas of common, commonality between the parties and start to identify some areas that we can look for possible resolution. After the conflict assessment, there's an opportunity for more follow-up meetings, but ultimately, it goes to a joint meeting between the district and the town council. That meeting would also be open to the public, and there'd be an opportunity to speak. If there is no resolution in either this process or the joint meeting, then it goes into a mediation. And so, at a mediation role, I may serve as the mediator in that. That would be behind closed doors, the two parties. It'd be my job to run back and forth and beat both sides up, and then come back with a resolution that goes back to the town council and to the, to the district respectively. So, for the public, you, this is an opportunity for you to, to raise your concerns. It's not a question and answer session. It'll be, you'll each be given three minutes to come forward, to put your comments on the record, and hopefully that those ideas can be incorporated by the parties, by myself, in trying to craft a resolution. Now, one thing I would like to point out is that, you know, today, I want to avoid the parties and the public, and instigating the parties, painting any of us into a corner. So, to that end, you know, I know there'll be, there'll be legal arguments from both sides. I would hope that we could focus on logistical, pragmatic, solution-oriented identification of issues in moving forward. I expect the parties to raise their legal concerns. I'm not going to dismiss those concerns right outright, but I hope that when we talk about the legal issues involved, we use them as guardrails to understand what processes and options we have in front of us, and also to identify legal obstacles to those solutions. So, there may be a solution proposed by the district that has legal barriers to the town. There may be a solution proposed by the town that has legal barriers for the district. That's where I'm, I'm trying to focus this in, on coming up with a couple of pathways that we can leave today with some options to explore further. And, you know, this is very important, and everyone understands. When we talk about what happens when you don't come up with a solution, when you go into litigation, at that point, you are asking a third party, a judge, sometimes a jury, to make a determination. That's the things that are important to you. You're not choosing those determinations, those determinations are made for you. And so, I think it's very important that we do what I asked, we listen to understand. Understanding the issues allows us to, to better put ourselves in someone else's shoes and to propose solutions that work for both sides. Alright, now, what I would like to do next is, I was originally gonna put a time limit, there's no time limit at this point. What I'd like to do is start with opening statements from the town, and then the district. Then we will move into, I may ask some questions for clarification purposes, because I have gone through the materials, but I understand that this is a very complicated issue. Then we'll go on to public comment. Once we go through public comment, I'll, I'm gonna try to restrict the time to one hour total, but give every, one opportunity to speak when asked that you limit your comments to three minutes, okay? And I'll be keeping time. And when we get to those public comments, it's very important that we remember where we are, okay? We're in a church, try to limit your convert, your, your, your comments to things that you would not say in a church, because we're not trying to disparage one another, we're trying to maintain decor, and we're trying to maintain the process. And we want people to listen, we don't want people to tune us out and ignore what we have to say. I will keep order within the meeting. If there's any reason that we need to cut the conversation off, cut the mics, do any of that, because we can't maintain order, I will be making that decision. Okay, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the town.
Okay. Thank you very much, Derek, I appreciate it. Will McCann, a town manager of Fort Myers Beach. I'd like to start by saying thank you Superintendent Carlin, thank you Board Member Ribble, and your staffs for meeting with us today and, and looking forward to the discussion. I'd like to acknowledge the profound emotions and aspirations that bring us here together today. At the heart of this conversation is a shared belief in hope. A hope that even after immense loss, we can not, we can rebuild not just structures, but trust, promise, and community. We are hopeful that through respectful dialogue and principled collaboration, we will renew our shared commitment to Fort Myers Beach Elementary and find responsible, ethical solutions that honor both the spirit of the interlocal agreement and the needs of our children and families. This conversation is not just about reopening a school, it's about restoring a promise. Fort Myers Beach Elementary School is more than a building. It's a symbol of resilience, continuity, and a hope for a community that has endured the devastation of Hurricanes Ian, Helene, and Milton. For our youngest residents, reopening the school is essential to restoring stability, supporting mental health, and ensuring long-term academic and emotional recovery. The town and the school district created the interlocal agreement to honor this need. It requires the district to renovate and reopen the Fort Myers Beach Elementary campus. Operating FMBE at Heights Elementary is not equivalent to reopening and does not meet the intent or conditions of this agreement. Without reopening the school on its designated campus, there is no valid financial or enrollment data to support claims of financial or enrollment instability. We ask the district to honor its commitment to reopen before either party makes sustainability assessments. Rebuilding the school is not only fiscally responsible, it is intellectually, administratively, socially, and morally sound. Thanks to FEMA's Section 428 program and state grants, up to 90% of the reconstruction costs are covered. Declining to rebuild forfeits these funds and shifts future educational burdens to local taxpayers. The cost of inaction, student displacement, increased transportation expenses, and declining property values far outweighs the costs of rebuilding. Schools are economic anchors. Reopening FMBE supports local employment, attracts families, and boosts redevelopment. It stabilizes the island, the island-wide workforce by providing nearby educational and childcare options, and contributes to the vitality of surrounding businesses. Some argue there aren't enough children to justify a school. But rebuilding institutions like schools is how communities recover and repopulate. A functioning school signals stability and invites families to return. The town has demonstrated a strong commitment to student recruitment, recruitment, community outreach, and aftercare support. Before Hurricane Ian, Fort Myers Beach Elementary School was successfully increasing enrollment through the Waterwise program, a marine-based curriculum that reflects the island's environmental and cultural identity. Section 2.5 of the ILA requires a joint review of enrollment and financial data by November of 2026. The district's current claims of financial unsustainability are premature and outside the agreed timeline. The town is prepared to explore financial contributions and charter school options, but the district has not yet engaged in collaborative feasibility, collaborative feasibility discussions. Furthermore, the cost-per-student report must reflect the actual cost of reopening Fort Myers Beach Elementary School on the island, not the cost of educating students at an alternate location. Rebuilding the school also aligns with the district's charter, character education initiative, which promotes values like responsibility, perseverance, and citizenship. Reopening Fort Myers Beach Elementary is a living example of those values. Some suggest that demolishing the school, or relocating it, or even merging it with another school. However, FEMA and state recovery grants are tied to the original site. Abandoning it would jeopardize funding and delay reopening. Rebuilding and/or reopening on the original site ensures compliance with federal and state requirements, allowing for a modern, storm-resilient facility. It also preserves walkability, reduces transportation-related emissions and costs, and maintains the school's central role in the community. It is impossible, it is possible to build an environmentally resilient and safe structure. It is happening as we speak across the island, and we know how to make it happen. The district's assertion of financial unstability, unsustainability does not meet the qualifying conditions for closure under Sections 2.5, Delta D, and 2.9 of the ILA. Section 7.3 unavoidable delay allows for deadline extensions due to force majeure, but does not authorize withdrawal or abandonment of reopening efforts. The town expects the district to comply with the ILA timeline and obligations, including a phased renovation and enrollment review process. We respectfully request the district join in collaborative, collaborative discussions with the town in the following ways. The town and the district should jointly determine whether Fort Myers Beach Elementary will reopen as a public district-operated school or transition to a charter model, including evaluating viable charter frameworks as agreed upon in the ILA. The town and the district must establish a shared timeline that includes key milestones, such as school board and town council votes, Department of Education filings, and facility readiness assessments. The timeline should align with the 2025, 26, and 26, 27 school years to ensure coordinated planning. If we agree to pursue a charter model, we would like the district to work with the town and coordinate access to facilities, ensure compliance with FEMA funding requirements, provide instructional resources, manage transportation logistics, and establish student assignment zones. This collaboration is essential for the successful and equitable transition. The town and the district should collaborate to update the ILA to reflect current timelines, responsibilities, and expectations. Both parties should clarify their roles in decisions affecting the Fort Myers Beach Elementary School property and educational services to ensure transparency and accountability. The town and the district should jointly outreach to Fort Myers Beach families to assess interest in returning to Fort Myers Beach Elementary. Together, we must develop strategies to meet the state minimum enrollment requirements and support long-term sustainability. Finally, reopening Fort Myers Beach Elementary is not just about education for us, it's about recovery, equity, leadership, and the entire community. It is a fiscally sound investment in our future and a moral imperative to serve all our residents, youngest to oldest. Thank you.
Alright, good afternoon. I better use these. Thank you all for coming today. It means a lot to both myself and the community and everyone out here that is gonna be here to speak. As the mayor of Fort Myers Beach, I'm deeply concerned about the ongoing situation with our school and the broken promises that have unfortunately marked this process, despite repeated words of commitment, actions, or lack thereof, are speaking much louder. We entered into an interlocal agreement in good faith, which outlined specific enrollment benchmarks that the town needed to meet for the school to act on rebuilding. These benchmarks were achieved, and every other aspect of our, our commitments was fulfilled. Unfortunately, Hurricane Milton disrupted our community, and the numbers today tell a different story. Not because of lack of action by the town or this council, but because of lack of action by the school district to reopen the school. According to the district staff, our enrollment was at 39 students. But what that does not share, what, what that number is not, does not share is that our enrollment had increased to 72, very close to pre-Ian numbers. And at one time, we were at 80, and we were well on our way to reaching the goal of 100 students by the end of the agreement. These numbers should have triggered this district to begin necessary repairs and additions as required in the interlocal agreement. Yet that has not happened. The question remains, why? On August 26th, Chair Fisher and I received an email regarding a FEMA award for $11,344,424.03 under FEMA Disaster Recovery 4673, granted to the Lee County School District specifically for hurricane-related repairs at Fort Myers Beach Elementary Campus from Congressman Donald's office. The detailed documentation laid out exactly how these funds were to be spent, but what stands out in this statement is potentially mitigation, potential mitigation was discussed, but the applicant will not pursue mitigation opportunities for this project. If the goal is to be fiscally responsible to taxpayers' dollars, why was mitigation not pursued? Why demolished buildings deemed salvageable through FEMA's substantial, substantially damaged reassessment? Buildings for which the district applied for and received funding to rebuild? Was it always the plan to avoid using those funds for rebuilding the school? Was it ever the district's true intention to eliminate the school? Furthermore, during a presentation to the district board on September 9th, Dr. Savage and staff reported that approximately $6 million was spent on repairs to the historic building to bring it back to operational status, which matched the insurance proceeds received. He also mentioned nearly $975,000 was spent on studies and maintenance since Hurricane Milton. He stated, "In all likelihood, any amount of money we put into this school is going to have to come in at the expense of other projects, technologies, new school builds, or other capital needs." All of these compete for the same dollars, and any new revenue could help us build or renovate more effectively. That's one of the benefits of the charter school model, because it, build or renovate more effectively. That's one of the benefits of the charter model, because these are still public schools and in our district. Just 10 days after receiving approval from FEMA funds, funds that clearly exceeded the actual rebuild costs, Dr. Savage convened that there was no money for this project without affecting other district initiatives. Was this an oversight, did they lack information at the time? Regardless, it is now clear that the district sought and secured a substantial federal aid package from the school's redevelopment, far exceeding what was required, yet mitigation funds were not pursued, and the district's claims of fiscal responsibility appear inconsistent with their actions. The district's breach of the agreed-upon benchmarks in the interlocal agreement, coupled with unanswered questions about the allegation and use of FEMA funds, is deeply troubling. Both FEMA and the state have confirmed that no requests have been made to reallocate those funds as required by the Stafford Act. Moreover, the school district's response to the town's public records request for supporting documentation on how these funds were spent remains incomplete. These funds were entrusted to serve the future of our children and our community. The way they have been spent raises serious concerns about transparency and accountability. Our community has shown unwavering support and patience, offering continued solutions and maintaining open communication. Words alone cannot rebuild trust. We need concrete, responsible actions to stabilize and preserve the school and its historic building. Our children's education and safety depend on it. Therefore, I call upon all parties involved to immediately remove the request to razz the historic building, the historic school from consideration. This will demonstrate a true willingness to find a solution. Let us focus on meaningful conversation and collaborative efforts to rebuild and preserve our school, respecting its historical significance and the future of our children. Today, I urge you all, I urge us all to prioritize action over words. Let's work together to find a responsible, equitable solution that honors our promises and secures a better future for the Fort Myers Beach community and its students. Thank you.
Good afternoon. As one of the town attorneys for the town of Fort Myers Beach, I want to begin by thanking the superintendent and the school board members who are here, and their staff for participating in this important discussion about the Fort Myers Beach School. This 164 process exists for one reason, to give local governments a fair opportunity to resolve disputes through open dialogue, mutual respect, and adherence to the law. Our town comes to this meeting in that spirit of cooperation. We're not here to fight. We're here to protect our community, protect our children's access to education, and protect a historic public asset that is crucial to the people of Fort Myers Beach. That cooperation, however, must begin with a mutual commitment to preserve, not demolish, the historic Beach School Building. The town's position is straightforward. The interlocal agreement between the town and the school board is a binding, enforceable contract. Florida law, particularly Section 163.01, the Interlocal Cooperation Act, expressly authorizes such agreements. Courts have consistently held that when two public entities voluntarily enter a written contract, they must honor it. The town relied on that agreement in good faith, dedicating resources and extensive planning efforts, including putting requirements and development agreements that would result in very significant increases in enrollment, with the understanding that Fort Myers Beach Elementary would be reopened and not eliminated. Unilateral demolition of the historical school building would not only be a clear anticipatory breach of the interlocal agreement, which is a legal term meaning an advance indication that one party intends not to perform its contractual obligations, but it would permanently eliminate the town's bargain-for right to consider operating the facility as a municipal charter school if the district ultimately chose to close its operation as a school operated by the district. This is a material, legal right, and it must be respected. While the town fully appreciates the school board's need to manage its facilities responsibly, there appears to be no practical, financial, or educational benefit for the district in demolishing this particular structure. The building is stable, historically significant, and protected under multiple areas of law and public policy. In fact, demolition would require the school board to expend significant public funds to eliminate a facility that not only currently poses no operational burden, but continues to hold substantial structural and historical value. The Beach School Building stands as a tangible, valuable asset, one that could be restored, adapted, or repurposed for educational or community benefit far more economically than rebuilding from the ground up. By contrast, removing it would not advance any legitimate operational objective, but would instead result in avoidable loss of value to the public and unnecessary expense to the district. There is a far more constructive path, one that channels those same resources into restoration and partnership rather than demolition and division.
I'm not here.
Okay. Demolition of the school building would only, also inflict substantial and unnecessary harm, both tangible and intangible, on the town and its, and its residents. It would erase a landmark that represents generations of community history and would expose the district to avoidable legal and financial consequences under the interlocal agreement, local historic preservation ordinances, and applicable state and federal regulations. A decision to preserve the building, therefore, is not only the legally sound path, it is also the fiscally prudent, educationally responsible, and community-minded course that honors our shared commitments to public education, historic preservation, and good governance. We also remind the school board that Chapter 164 regards, requires both parties to refrain from unilateral actions, such as demolition, while this dispute resolution process is underway. Proceeding with that activity now would not only be a clear anticipatory breach of the ILA, but would also undermine the very purpose of this meeting and would compromise the validity of the process. We were specifically, respectfully request and acknowledgement at this meeting that the school board will withdraw and take no further action on any plans to raise the historic building as a good-faith demonstration of their intent to maintain open communication and preserve a cooperative resolution consistent with the interlocal agreement and this 164 process. Taking demolition off the table entirely would be a clear sign of good faith to our residents and parents, showing the school board remains committed to working with the town toward the ultimate goal of reopening the Beach School. Further, our local historic preservation ordinance applies to all property with the town, within the town, including this one. Florida law makes clear that educational facilities must be consistent with local comprehensive plans and implementing land use regulations. A special certificate of appropriateness from the town's historic preservation board is required before any demolition or alteration of a designated historic resource can occur, including the Beach School historic structure. The school's National Register of Historic Places designation and the use of FEMA disaster recovery funding by the school board also trigger Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. That federal process must be completed before any adverse effect, including demolition, takes place. For the school board to act without fully following this process risks noncompliance with federal law and could jeopardize future funding for the entire school district. None of us want that. The town respectfully urges the school board, first, to firmly acknowledge that the school, school board will withdraw all demolition-related plans and commitments, and will not take any further steps toward raising the historic Beach School Building. Second, to engage in good-faith negotiation and mediation to reach a lawful and cooperative solution. And third, to reaffirm the shared commitment to reopen and keep open the Fort Myers Beach School, one that honors both our community's history and its future. Fort Myers Beach, its elected officials and its staff stand ready to work together with the school board to reach this goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything additional from the town?
Just a couple more things. My name is Jim Aderhold, I'm the vice mayor of the town of Fort Myers Beach, and I have the privilege of serving on the ad hoc committee since it was conceived to help formulate the interlocal agreement. Dr. Carlin, Member Ribble, your team, welcome, thank you for being here. I'm, I don't have prepared remarks, because I want to speak from the heart this afternoon, and I want to say a couple things. Number one, having been on the town council two years prior to Hurricane Ian, we were never once contacted by the Lee County School District to convey that there was issues with enrollment, that there were financial issues with the school. We had no communication whatsoever, the mayor and I, we weren't, he wasn't the mayor, I wasn't the vice mayor at the time, we were both members of the town council, never received any communication that there were challenges, until we got hit with the worst tragedy in our history. Then, at that point, at least the way the parents described it to us when they came to us in desperation, they felt like the school district was trying to close the school at a time when we were at our weakest. And, you know, after the storm, we had kind of two camps. We had a camp that really helped further our progress towards recovery, and we had a camp that really hindered our, our path to recovery. The folks who hindered our path, the insurance companies, you know, they would, they would delay, deny, deceive. That was our, our number one challenge, is, is to get them to honor their contract and to honor their promises made to their customers. I was the former state insurance commissioner in Indiana for four years. I've never seen anything like it, we were completely betrayed by that industry. Just another couple examples, the post office. They said to us after the storm, we had every single vehicle destroyed on Fort Myers Beach as a result of the storm. They said to us, "Oh, if you want your mail, you're gonna have to drive out to the, to the airport and go to the post office out there, it's about 45 minutes, but you'll figure out a way." It's about 45 minutes, but you'll figure out a way. And eventually, we worked through that. We had FEMA that would, instead of partnering with us to try to maintain compliance, they were extremely difficult to work with and adversarial up until recently. And then, so this camp really made our recovery challenging. And then, we had folks like the Lee County Commissioners. Our commissioners did everything humanly possible at a time when they had their hands full to reach out to us, to help us, debris removal, everything under the sun you can imagine. Commissioner Sandelli was calling every day, what do you need? How are things going? How can I help? Roger DeJalay, Jim, you need anything, call us. We're here to help you. And then, we had our congressional delegation. Senator Scott was the one who called the postmaster general himself personally three times to get a temporary trailer so he could get our mail. Our state legislative delegation gave us huge appropriations to help us recover. We had, the sheriff's department, was there anything we needed, they were there for us. And, you know, the Lee County School District after the storm, it was challenging. The parents felt like they were trying to close the school. The parents got organized, they got the town involved, they got the media involved, and then some wonderful elected school board members came to our rescue, and we worked through an ILA that really did solve the problem, and we felt like we were making real progress. Obviously, we've had additional storms, but this concept of partnering together to help us, I mean, help us, for God's sakes, help us. We're on the same team. Can we work together? I have no idea what the position of the Lee County School District is. I've heard some individual school board members, some of them very gracious, help us, help us help you. It's a real challenge. I've been to so many meetings, I've seen parents take time off from their jobs, trying to figure out what to do with their kids. We've had so many meetings. We had an ILA, we worked hard to get that ILA, it was done in good faith. Help us. Dr. Carlin, I was at an event prior to your election at former mayor of Fort Myers Beach in Sarah Siedes' house. You gave a, first of all, we had a great private conversation, and you gave a beautiful speech, committed to Fort Myers Beach Elementary School. You held up the principal at the time, Tracy Kohler, who's now our assistant or deputy town manager. Is a paragon of virtue, and she'll be great to help us with the recovery. I believed you, and I still think that you believe that, and I'm hopeful because, you know, it'd be different if you were coming from California, Maryland, and new to the district like the prior-appointed superintendents, but you know this district better than anybody. You're the most qualified person in Lee County to do this. We need your help. Please, help us. Thank you very much.
And I just have a little bit to round it out, and first of all, it's really emotional for me to be on both sides of the table at some point in my life, and I do see everyone here as colleagues and friends, so thank you for being here today, and I really look forward to finding a resolution to this. As a former principal of Fort Myers Beach Elementary and now the deputy town manager, I've witnessed both the academic and humanitarian impact this school has had on our island community. Fort Myers Beach Elementary has always been more than a school, it's a stabilizing force for families during their most challenging times. Our students and families have been disproportionately impacted by successive hurricanes, displacement, and loss of community structure. Putting on my education hat for a minute, just as we provide targeted support for a child struggling to read or to learn a new language, Fort Myers Beach Elementary requires short-term intervention to restore stability so that we can ensure long-term success on our own. Education is a humanitarian effort at its core. It offers opportunity, equity, and hope. Schools are not just buildings, and as our town manager said, they are delivery systems for compassion, consistency, and connection. Character education is fundamental to Fort Myers Beach Elementary, teaching responsibility, respect, and resilience. These principles mirror those of our founding fathers, who believed in local education, and that local education was essential to preserving democracy, civic virtue, and the strength of our communities. Rebuilding of Fort Myers Beach Elementary is not merely a construction project, it's an investment in humanity. It represents our collective responsibility to nurture the next generation, provide a safe and inspiring environment for learning, and ensure that every child, regardless of their circumstance, has the opportunity to thrive in a school on the island of Fort Myers Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn it over to the school district.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone, and we really appreciate the town, Mayor Allers, Vice Mayor Aderhold, and team for being here, and Tracy, thank you for your kind words. We recognize that this probably is...
Stay here!
Okay, is my microphone on? Maybe it's not on. Let me speak a little closer. Okay, yep. Okay, let's try that again. Good afternoon, Mayor Allers, Vice Mayor Aderhold, and to the team representing Fort Myers Beach, the town of Fort Myers Beach. And I wanted to start my comments by just thanking you, and I started to compliment Dr. Kohler, because I know that you love the beach and you love the children, and so just thank you very much for what you're doing. And I want to tip my hat to everybody on the beach side of things. We know that you love the kids, and we do too. So let's just, we'll start there from maybe a point of agreement, right? So I'll start with the purpose of today, and I know Mr. Rooney has done a nice job of outlining that. We know that today is really about identifying the issues and really having an opportunity to have an open and honest conversation about all of the facts, everything that's associated with this, right? This issue. And we also recognize that it is an opportunity for us to discuss options and to land at an appropriate place. And so, our job today is to convey the facts as we know them, all of us, right? All of us at these tables, and then to work toward some type of resolution. That's really, truly where our heart is. Today, I look forward to, like I said, a productive conversation. I appreciate the sentiments that are shared, and you're correct, Vice Mayor Aderhold, I've lived here for a very long time. I do care about this community. I've shared with a number of you that I know very well, that I ran for superintendent, but I was retired and then ran. So I did not leave retirement and say, oh, let's just, you know, put the feet on the desk. That's not who I am. We are committed to finding a resolution today. We will share the facts as we know them. We have listened to you and to hear your take on that, and then let's work together in a really productive way, and let's see what we can put together. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Ribble, who is our vice chair of the school board. He is the board-appointed representative, and he's going to have some opening remarks, and then we'll share more of the story.
Yeah, I'm going to keep this very brief. I have some comments for later, but I do want to thank the Fort Myers Beach Council for joining us here, trying to get this resolved. I certainly have empathy for you folks. You folks, over the last few years, I mean, nobody can appreciate all the strife and challenges you had with the storms that we've had. I mean, you folks live right across the bay, so I kind of have a bird's-eye view of what you guys go through every day. I see whether there's miles of debris or mountains of sand and whatever, and then I see them go away, I know you're fixing it. As with any elected body, you folks have five votes. So you folks, the five of you have to agree as a council. As far as our board, we have seven votes. We have seven members on the board, two of which support trying to do something on the right, on the right track for the beach, which I encourage you to give me some information so I can go back and work with the other five folks on our board so we can get a vote of seven. Really, you can only get a vote up to four, but I like to go back and get all seven. So I'm really looking at having a good dialogue, a good change of ideas. Both sides need to give or take a little bit on some of these issues, and as our mediator said, or our attorney here, Derek Rooney, said, hopefully we can get this resolved in several meetings. Thank you very much.
At this time, I have the privilege of outlining the school board's position and the school district's position. So first, good afternoon, and thank you for having us come and speak to you today. We truly appreciate it, and we're looking forward to a collaborative effort to try and get this resolved. So the framework for the district's formal presentation today is to basically identify the issues, as has been presented specifically by the town, to clarify the facts, as well as explain our legal position. Throughout this process, even everything that I say and everything that is shown to you today, I want you to know that the school district is committed to this process, and we are also committed to transparency, a partnership, and open communication, because the end result is to have some type of resolution. First and foremost, we recognize the unique history and the enduring importance of Fort Myers Beach Elementary. I'm having a little technical problem with advancing the slides. There you go. Thank you. For generations, it has been more than a school. We understand that. It has been a community landmark, a place where families gathered, where children began their educational journeys, and where the town's sense of identity took root. The school district deeply values that legacy. When Hurricane Ian struck, the loss was not only physical, it was deeply emotional, and it was felt throughout the county. We understand the pain of seeing a beloved school damaged and the frustration of watching recovery take longer than anyone hoped for. We also recognize how deeply this community feels about preserving both the historic structure and the opportunity for education on the island. As required by statute, given this is a legal process, the town sent its conflict issues letter on October 10, 2025 alleging the following. Failure to rebuild and operate the school pursuant to Section 1.1 of the ILA. The town alleged that the district failed to rebuild, operate, or maintain the school. On October 7, 2025, the district sought Department of Education approval to demolish and ignored the town's request to suspend demolition, begin Chapter 164 processes, and follow the historic FEMA requirements. Two, the district allegedly failed to meet enrollment and operational goals pursuant to Section 3 of the ILA. The district's delays made the town's enrollment goals virtually impossible, facilities for 52 students not ready for the fall of 2023, inadequate facilities and staffing hindered recruitment and programming, and no school was operating between fiscal years '23 through '25. And then finally, the town alleged that the district failed to follow rebuilding timelines I specified in Section 3 of the ILA. Phase 1 was not completed to meet the temporary needs of the 52 students. The kitchen cafeteria was not completed, and the historic building was not expanded to allow growth for at least 80 students. The key question, really, is has the school board met its obligations under the ILA? And it is the school district's position that the board has fully complied with the ILA and that there has not been a breach. From the start, the school board has acted in good faith and has fully complied with the ILA. The district restored the historic school building, investing over $1.7 million to stabilize and mitigate the site after Hurricane Ian, and another $6.8 million to rebuild facilities for the 52 students enrolled before the storm. By the late fall of 2023, those students, all 52, returned to the island, with the district providing full services and instructional support as required by law. The ILA required space for up to 80 students, but the restored building was designed for 116, exceeding expectations and planning for growth. Consistent with the agreement, the district engaged in broad community outreach, promoted the school publicly, and partnered with Florida Gulf Coast University to enhance STEM and coastal curriculum. The district also expanded the attendance boundary to include Summerlin Road and St. Carlos Boulevard, and went even further by removing all zone restrictions so any student in the county could attend. Finally, it is accurate that certain facilities on the campus were demolished because they no longer met code and were deemed unsafe. However, per the ILA, if enrollment grew above the current capacity, right now it was 116 at the time, the district would expand facilities at the board's sole discretion, consistent with law, funding, and building standards. The only remaining item under the ILA not completed was the construction of a kitchen and cafe, an additional project of $6 million scheduled to begin sometime in '24, '25. The district had already started that process, including drafting architectural plans for that cafe. The delay in building the cafe was a direct result of two storms that struck in 2024, Hurricanes Helene and Milton in late September and early October. Each produced a minimum four-foot storm surge and had added additional damage to the school. These repeated storms caused unavoidable delays. Under the ILA's force majeure clause, Acts of God, the delay is not a breach of contract, but a direct result of severe weather beyond the district's control. After Hurricane Helene and Milton, structural assessments revealed that the school's wood-framed floor system had lost about 60% of its load-bearing capacity due to repeated saltwater intrusion and decay. The structure has exceeded its service life and now requires partial floor replacement, electrical upgrades, and other critical repairs before it can be safely reoccupied. The estimated cost is between $7 to $10 million, on top of more than $1 million already spent on stabilization since the storms, and then on top of the $10 million that was spent after Hurricane Ian. It's important to be clear, and this is really fundamental for everybody to understand, the ILA does not require the district to continuously repair, stabilize, and rebuild after every storm. Before Hurricane Ian, enrollment averaged between 50 and 59 students. When the school reopened in the fall of 2023, that number rose to approximately 70 students. This enrollment, this year, enrollment has dropped to 41 students, and based on addresses, only about 20 of those actually live on the island. A clear pattern has emerged. After every major storm, enrollment declines, and despite the tremendous, tremendous efforts of the parents and the town and the district, who's done everything that they could do to help rebuild and recruit, and the numbers of cycle do not remain stable. This shows deeper structural vulnerability, one that raises real questions about the long-term sustainability of maintaining a permanent, traditional, public school on the island amid recurring weather events. The one thing that is guaranteed is that there will be additional significant weather events. Fort Myers Beach Elementary has long had the highest per-student operating cost in the entire district, higher than both the district average and our other barrier island schools. We truly, again, recognize the hard work of the parents and our town leaders, who've tried to increase enrollment, and the district's effort to reduce costs after Hurricane Ian, but the financial realities remain. As we move forward, we have to be pragmatic and acknowledge these facts. Elementary school starts at 8:25 a.m. Students from Fort Myers Beach have three designated bus stops on the island. Morning pickup begins around 7:48, with students arriving at Heights Elementary about 25 minutes later, around 8:13 a.m. Afternoon routes mirror the same schedule, covering 8.5 miles away. Notably, that commute is about 20 minutes shorter than the district's average bus ride of 45 minutes. Given the repeated storm impacts, the district had an obligation to study whether it was feasible to maintain a school in such a high-risk coastal zone. After Hurricanes Helene and Milton, both striking within two years after Ian, the district commissioned a long-term feasibility study that was completed on June 3, 2025, which was shared with the town. The study raised serious concerns. The historic school sits only about 1,200 feet from the Gulf and 800 feet from the intracoastal waterway. It is five feet below FEMA's current base flood elevation. The site has flooded multiple times in just five years. Under today's building codes, a new school could not even be built at that elevation. Demographics compound the challenge. The island's median age is 68, with few school-aged children and housing costs... with few school-aged children and housing costs that remain high, making it difficult for new families. Storm frequency and intensity are increasing. Since Ian in 2022, the area has endured three more impactful storms, Debbie, Helene, and Milton, all in 2024, confirming the island's vulnerability to sea level rise and erosion, which is verified by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which notes that the shoreline erosion will continue to accelerate. The cost of these storms is significant. Since Ian, the district has spent nearly $10 million on restoration, mitigation, and rebuild, with another $7 to $10 million now needed after Helene and Milton. Projections show that the district could face the same level of cost every five years, creating what is essentially a repetitive loss situation. When damage is this extensive, a cost study analysis is required to determine whether it's more cost-effective to modernize or replace the facility. This analysis was completed in October. As required by law, the report has been submitted to the Florida Department of Education for review. Once the DOE issues its determination, the superintendent will convene with her staff and prepare a formal recommendation for the board to consider. However, after speaking with the superintendent, during this Chapter 164 conflict resolution process, the superintendent will withhold any formal recommendation in good faith to allow us to move forward to a collaborative resolution. If demolition is ultimately recommended and approved, the district will comply with all national, state, and local historic preservation requirements, including Section 267 and 106. From a legal standpoint, it's important to reaffirm a foundational principle. The May 23 inter-local agreement between the town and the school board cannot, by law, transfer, limit, or condition the school board's constitutional authority. Under Article 9, Section 4B of the Florida Constitution, each district's school board, quote, "shall operate, control, and supervise all three public schools within the district." This authority is exclusive, continuous, and non-delegable. It cannot be surrendered or restricted by a contract. That authority is further reinforced by Florida statutes, Sections 1,001.41 through 1,001.43, 1013.40 through 1013.48, which specifically assign the school board the sole responsibility for acquiring, constructing, maintaining, and disposing of public school facilities. The inter-local agreement itself reinforces these limits. Sections 2.1, 2.3, and 3.2 explicitly state that services, facilities, and staffing decisions are made at the sole discretion and authority of the school board, as well as in compliance with law, regulation, and policy. Any interpretation that would require the school board to give up or subordinate its constitutional authority will be ultraviers beyond the lawful power of either party and honestly, in violation of the inter-local act because you cannot give a power away that is constitutionally yours, and it will be unenforceable as a matter of law. The legal doctrines of impossibility and practicability and frustration of purpose recognized under Florida law are also applicable to this matter. Hurricanes and their repeated losses are force-major events, as provided for in the ILA. Specific performance, meaning to force somebody to do something that is in the contract, such as create and build a cafe, is inappropriate when the contract grants the school board sole discretion or fiscal conditions fail. Finally, the sole default remedy. If the school board was in default of the contract, the only remedy provided for in the ILA is a reversionary interest of a prior land exchange agreement with the town, meaning we'll swap back our lands, not specific performance. After Hurricane Ian, the district applied for FEMA public assistance funding across the district, including Fort Myers Beach Elementary. While FEMA reviewed the application, the district secured a $55 million advance through the Florida Legislative Appropriation Program, often called the LAPL loan, a special initiative created to provide upfront recovery funds while awaiting FEMA reimbursement. About $10 million of that loan was used for Fort Myers Elementary Beach recovery cost. To ensure maximum flexibility, the district pursued one of its FEMA applications under Section 428 of the Stafford Act, which allows funds to be used more broadly, not just to rebuild exactly what existed before the disaster. On August 18, 2025, three years, August 18, 2025, FEMA issued its obligation letter approving approximately $11 million for Fort Myers Beach Elementary. This signified FEMA's agreement on cost, not an immediate payment, and applies to already expended funds. Now that the obligation letter for Ian repairs has been received, district staff will review it and meet with the superintendent to determine next step, including any discussion regarding amendments to the 428 application. Notwithstanding, we must remember that these funds must first be credited toward the LAPL loan, and FDEM, Florida Department of Emergency Management, will process those funds accordingly. They will never go to the district. Although applications remain pending at this time, we do not expect additional FEMA funds for Hurricanes Helene or Milton. Given how long the Ian process has taken, we anticipate a similar timeline for the resolution of those applications. There's been a claim that Fort Myers Beach residents contribute about $29 million in taxes to the school district and therefore believe the district is obligated to rebuild and operate the school. It's important to clarify that the district does not receive tax data by region. Milledge revenues are collected countywide and distributed by law through the county. They're not earmarked or traceable to any specific community by the district. So we simply don't know how much that comes directly from Fort Myers Beach to the district. More importantly, the district cannot make facility decisions based on where those taxes are generated. Our obligation is to provide equitable access to education for all students, consistent with the United States Constitution, Florida Constitution, federal and state law. Consistent with these legal requirements, Board Policy 2260 affirms that all students must have equal educational opportunities regardless of where they live within the district or their social or economic background. The key takeaways from the district's point of view is that the district complied with the ILA, and there was no breach. Conditions changed materially after Hurricanes Helene and Milton, and the board must act within its constitutional duty, statutory authority, and fiduciary duties in being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. The school district is committed to a lawful, fiscally responsible, and sustainable solutions for the Fort Myers Beach families, such as a charter school, and the district looks forward to our discussions today. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I'm sure that... I thought those were both very good opening statements. I'm sure that both sides probably got their back up on certain comments from either side. I'm sure that I feel that energy coming from the public. And just want to remind everyone that these are just the opening remarks. They're only designed to start to identify the issues, identify the hurdles that we may be hearing from either side to move forward. Some of the hurdles I heard from the school board would be the same hurdles we felt by the town if the town was to take on the property as a town charter. A lot of these same issues, fiscal issues, would be the same that you're going to have to deal with. And so, again, to the point I made at the very beginning, this is a complicated process. It's going to take a long time. Before I move on to public comment, though, I want to give the parties an opportunity to ask questions, not rebut, not, you know, set traps for anyone. But if there's any questions about either side's opening statements that you'd like to get some clarification on, I think now would be a great time to take that opportunity. And I'll turn it over to the town first, if you have any questions. Mr. Bruno's presentation.
Yeah, I do. And thank you all for your comments. Ms. Bruno, you had mentioned that there was roughly $10 million that was spent to fix the school after Hurricane Ian. How much of that money was actually spent to tear down the buildings that FEMA and the state deemed were not substantially damaged, but probably ended up wore because of lack of action for over a year to mitigate those buildings? They sat empty and untouched for a year, which only drives up the costs to tear that building down. Why wasn't it mitigated right after the storm? And how much of that $10 million went to that demolition?
So I can tell you that the total cost for the rebuild, any construction services that we did, as well as the demolition, was about $6.8 million. I will also tell you that those buildings that were demolished were demolished because they could not build... They could not meet code. I will tell you that the school district, after Hurricane Ian, did everything possible, because I will tell you, I was on the phone with my procurement staff, working, you know, right after the storm to get individuals to come in and do mitigation on all of our buildings, including Fort Myers Beach. So everything that could be done was done to try to salvage as much as we can. But to answer your direct question, about $6.8 million altogether.
And thank you.
If I could just ask a real quick follow-up?
Real quick, I want... The only reason I want to point one thing out is because I think in the presentation of both sides, there's such an eagerness to get ready to respond and do all that. We missed over one... Lost over one very big concession that the district gave right out, which was almost the entire focus of the last 10 minutes of the presentation of town, is at this moment, there's no plans to move forward with the demolition of Fort Myers Beach Elementary until this process is laid out. So I want to get that and let everyone, let that sink in a little bit first and say, okay, we've relieved some of the tension, the pressure here. And Mayor Albers?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rudy, for pointing that out. Maybe, you know, with all of us talking for so long, sometimes things can get lost in transition. But, Ms. Bruno, if I'm being honest, I find it a little disingenuous when you say we did everything possible to the residents and the parents and the kids of that school, who did do everything possible to mitigate their homes after they were destroyed. So I do find it a little disingenuous that you're sitting there telling everybody out there that you did everything possible, but after a year, you couldn't touch those schools. You couldn't touch those buildings when everyone in Lee County that was affected by that storm absolutely got their arms in the mud, their boots on and their gloves on, and helped each other to do it, and you guys did nothing.
I understand that sentiment, Mayor Allers, and I do understand the frustrations of the parents, especially. They were also going through that same tragedy after Hurricane Ian. And I'll tell you this, I know the school district, because it was district-wide. We had teachers and staff members. I had a member of my staff, whose the water went all the way up to the second floor of their home. So we understand the emotional and the human element that occurred. We are a school district. We have so many regulations and processes. Sometimes we just can't move as fast as an individual homeowner may be able to move. I can tell you that we got cotton out there as quickly as possible. I know we had ProServe out there as quickly as possible. We could, I think, if I remember correctly, there was inaccess to the island even. I remember that Dr. Burnier, and I believe Ms. Polar, went on a helicopter, and they were reviewing the damage. So there were a lot of logistics. Again, the school district just can't move as fast as a homeowner. But I'm sorry if it feels disingenuous, but I'm not trying to be. We really did do everything that we possibly could do for Fort Myers Beach, as well as all of the other schools that we had to address.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno. Any other questions from the town?
Could I just, real quick, Dr. Carlin, if I could? This was a fascinating presentation, helpful to know what the formal position is. Don't always agree with all those points, obviously. But I guess, that being said, what was unclear to me, and has been unclear for a while now, having seen what you have just seen, and I know you're waiting for a determination from the state of Florida, but basically, given your extensive experience, do you envision, or do you have a vision for a path forward? Are you waiting completely on the state of Florida? Or do you have, in your head, do you have a vision where the school district could help the town of Fort Myers Beach build a new school adjacent to the historical school? Do you... I mean, you're a pretty experienced person. What's your vision for Fort Myers Beach Elementary School, if I could ask?
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. So, full disclosure, I am an educator, so I am not a contractor. I am not somebody that can go in easily and assess the conditions of a building. I have a brother-in-law who's a G C, so he probably could sit here and give you, you know, the technical answer on whether that building is able to. We did, I did ask for a feasibility study, because, again, I'm an educator. I'm not a contractor. Prior to this, I did not, just full disclosure, didn't know much about REVAR. So I've learned a lot about that, okay? So where I stand is, basically, and we've talked about this, we want to have all of the information. You know, I'm a data kind of gal. I am somebody who wants to have all of the information at my fingertips. When I asked about a feasibility study, it had been assured to me that there was one that was done. After asking multiple times and trying to figure out, the answer was no, there had not been one done. So that was concerning to me as a new superintendent. Again, full disclosure, I'm not a general contractor. So I'm not going to be able to make those types of decisions without an expert opinion. So that has, that came forward. You know, several of y'all were at the meeting where that was discussed. I know that created some level of angst. But for me, it was very reassuring, because it was finally somebody who stepped up and said, these are the concerns about the building. Where I personally stand on this is I am looking forward to this conversation, and I am going to share with you, just in full disclosure, I want to make sure we have all of the information at our fingertips before I bring a recommendation to the school board. Do I want to see something that's beneficial for children? Yes. Do I think there is a path forward? Yes. I heard Mr. Bree Bruno talk about a charter, okay? And Mayor Allers and I were in a meeting with some other elected officials, and there seemed to be a lot of agreement at that meeting around a charter as a feasible way, potentially, to move forward. Do you remember that meeting?
I do.
Okay, so we all were kind of singing from that same hymnal, right? And so I just want to make sure that you know that was a meeting we had. I am open to the conversation around a charter. I think there could be some possibilities, but I want to be very abundantly clear. I am not bringing a recommendation to the school board until I have all of the information. And the reason for that, I am not a general contractor. So I will go back to the conversation we had. Mayor Allers, a few other elected officials, and myself talked about a charter. We felt like it could be a way forward. But again, I'm not going to make that final decision until I have all of the information. Thank you.
And I appreciate your...
Jim, can I just step in one, really quick? Because I don't want to get too far into where we're going to end up at the end of the day, but I do, I think your point was very well-targeted. And Dr. Carlin, I appreciate the answer. And maybe this is a question, just to get it out there for everyone. Dr. Carlin, possibly Dr. Savage, knows the answer. The difference between what a charter has to do for building purposes and what the school board have to do under the educational facilities regulations are completely different, okay? So the analysis that the town might take if the town was to take on as a municipal charter and what district would take, two different animals. And, of course, the risk that the town would be willing to take for resiliency to rebuilding over time. Their interest is much deeper than that would be of the district. So I want to make sure everyone... I already see the threads of some thought patterns going. So with that, if you had something to follow up?
Just a brief follow-up, respectfully. I guess what I'm still trying to understand, just trying to understand, not trying to debate here. So if... And I've heard, I don't want to speak for School Berber Ribble, but he's discussed the concept or the need for a potential new building. And if that became a charter, the new building, and we kept the old building for a community center, whatever the school, if wanted to use it for something, but we felt like it needed to be preserved for its historical benefits, but we decided that we needed to build a new school building. Do you envision a scenario where the school district will help the town pay for that new building? Can you envision any scenario where that occurs?
I'm not going to rule out any potential solutions here. I think that's the purpose of today, is to iron out what those issues are. So I'm not going to rule that out. But again, it is important to me. I'm a data-driven kind of person. Do we all love the kids on the island? Yes. Do we love the kids off the island that are attending? Absolutely. I also love all 103,000 students that are in our district. So as I referenced before, the greatest indication that you can have is the mayor of my... So as I referenced before, the greatest indication that you can have is the mayor, myself, couple of other elected officials were on the phone, and we all seemed to, and the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, but we all seemed to see a lot of promise around a potential charter. And so that's where I'm comfortable sharing today. I won't preclude any potential involvement, but I feel like it could be premature in making that decision today. I've heard Council Rooney caution us against that, so I do want to share with you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And let me, let me-
That's where I'm at.
Give you a little-
Thank you, thank you, by the way. I'm just doing my best to try to get some clarity. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, some of the history too, you know, to give examples in which the, the town itself would have some acknowledgement, some history in this. Imagine the situation when the town was created. You know, there were Lee County facilities, and there was a negotiation about some of those Lee County facilities coming over to the town. And there's a process by which, you know, you can have a conversation about, we're going to be taking on this facility, that's, maybe you're taking, in this case, you might be taking on a school, you'd be taking on students, there's obligations under Florida law, that the, the district will support charters in some degree, but also by the town taking on some of those, those facility obligations, those facility obligations that the district's not going to have to look at, co-locating at other school facilities. And also, they're taking an item off their books, an asset off their books, there's going to be discussions about that. All of those conversations are, are complicated, but the answer to your question is, it's all in the mix.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. McKenna, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Thank you, Superintendent, for, for your willingness to, and expressions about not moving forward at this time with the, with raising of the building, or, or anything further along what was recommended with the Castaldi Report. And Kathy, thank you so much for the, for the presentation and the details presented therein. I would ask just a request, as we go forward with your concession, Superintendent, and as we talk about whether charter or public school, or whatever it is with that facility, or with any other facility. I, I was, let me go back a little bit, I was, I was a little disappointed when we received notification of the Castaldi Report, a feasibility assessment, that we as cosigners to the ILA were not invited to be a part of that feasibility assessment anyway. Maybe it wasn't required under your assessment, but I would have liked to have seen that invitation. And going forward, I would like to offer our partnership in maybe relooking at that feasibility assessment. From my understanding, none of our town subject matter experts, my community development director, who's here with us today, planners, builders on the island that we work with every day, who I mentioned in my, in my opening comment, are very experienced at building resilient structures, rebuilding, building new, building whatever. We believe there is a path forward for resilience in that structure, and potentially new structures. We would just like to enter into those collaborative discussions with the school district as we move forward in this, whether it's, you know, a public school under the district or a charter school that maybe we receive, you know, from the, from the district. I think it would be a good, a good faith to talk about partnering with us who have some on-the-ground experience with building on Fort Myers Beach.
I, I might add, Mr. Mediator, that our, our new town manager, who's recently retired from the U.S. Army, a career Army, he was on the school board at Fort Riley for a number of years. So he's, he's not new to the school process, and obviously, we've got Dr. Kohler as his right hand, so we've got a good team to work with.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from anyone on the school board side?
No, Mr. Rooney, I'd just like to make, make a statement. I, I presented this thing, I was intending to read this whole thing earlier, but I'm just going to chop it up a little bit, because I want to break through. As you folks know, I'm, I'm big on doing Google searches to find best practices, whatever that may be. We talked about the Outer Banks thing in the June 3 meeting. I had a bunch of calls from constituents, are really interested in that rebuild, how the construction was done with the ramps. We got the, we downloaded the, the drawings and sent them to a lot of your residents, a lot of folks. Nobody ever brings that up at any kind of conversations. It's, it's kind of interesting. I think they're afraid to come forward, but a lot of folks kind of like that. As far as resiliency and hardening, you know, since Ian, the county's done a lot of things, we had 1.3 billion dollars given to us by the feds to make us hardened and resilient, and we wound up spending most of that money on affordable housing. So unfortunately, we weren't able to really improve some of the processes that we had when it comes to power, internet, et cetera, that we had hoped to. But as far as an island, I think you guys have done a great job in hardening your island. I'm looking at, I, I get on the website every day, I read your newsletters every day, I really liked the one you had this morning. Mayor Dan, I thought it was a good one for today's meeting about being collaborative and, and working together on, on different concepts. But when it comes to hardening, I was impressed with some of the processes that you put in place. I know my wife was out here ribbon-cutting for the, the new city hall, which definitely is, meets, any, any storm that comes along, you folks have, have done well with it. As you know, we were at lunch a couple weeks ago with the Chamber of Commerce, and we sat with a developer that did the firehouse. And he was really bragging up how left-thinking withstands anything that you throw at it. And again, being resilient and hardening, you guys did a wonderful job with that. And now we just found out, I guess, a meeting here with the Church of Ascension, has got to rebuild their parish out there, which is going to be huge. Again, but the old parish has to come down, and you've got to build a new one up that's going to be meeting code. Then recently, just a few days ago, I see you guys have approved the Beach Baptist Church, which, and I saw the drawings for that. What concerns me is, with all these storms that we had, Charlie with a six-to-seven-foot storm surge, Woma at four-to-eight-foot storm surge on the beach, Irma at a seven-foot storm surge, Ian at a 10-to-15, and Milton at five-foot storm surge, we're still hanging on to that old-school building. I just, it's, it's just not, I don't know what we can do to that to make it compatible with these other bills that you did. So I just want you to think about that for the next couple of days, and, and really say, is this the right thing to do to put more money into that structure? That is really the deal-breaker, I think. And I've told everyone, I've had a lot of conversations, Jim, I haven't had a conversation with you, but everybody else at the table, except your attorney, we've had a lot of conversations here the last three months at different events, and I applaud you folks for being so gracious to be open-minded and discussing some of these things. But I think what we need is a way to deliver the message to the town so that the residents understand this, because we go, we do 180 flips on some of our conversations on this issue of this school. And, and I said this on June the 3rd, I'm not in favor of putting any more money into that building, it's putting good money after bad, but we are Lee County, we are the Lee County School District, and you folks are part of that. And I certainly share, and I think you deserve sharing in the education process. And you know, you have my vote on that, and I have appeared to think strongly about it. So I'd like, I'd like us to get through that piece, that we have a, a facility that can withstand the storm surges like these other five structures that you folks recently held to code and approved. That's all I have.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a, that's a good point to take a break on before we get to public comment. We've been going for a little over an hour, a little longer than I thought, and, and I definitely want to get to the public comment, but I also don't want to break us in the middle of the public comment. So, you know, I think that'd be something also to think about. Let's take a 10-minute recess, think about the, some of the conversations that Mr. Ribble pointed out, because that's a, that's an element of, you know, something to consider for the school and for the town.
Sure.
You should move up.
I know, the audience is all the way up.
Okay.
Someone like, I was talking to a gentleman, he said, mine is what I think, big push to the mic, he's big up me.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, here it's not, hi.
Yeah. Are you, are you familiar with the work?
I live in Fort Myers, so I have plenty of hurricanes.
Oh, okay, alright.
I used to be the town attorney, and I'm actually the city attorney for the new district.
Oh, okay.
Definitely always around.
Okay. I'm in that corner, I live in Sterro. That was a kid from here.
Yeah, I used to be village attorney too, and Bill was the mayor.
Oh, really?
Yeah, can't get out of it.
Is it, can you talk to them? Probably should just wait.
You can talk to them if you want.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Thank you for everything I've got to say. I would never really get all these things out.
It's gonna be worse.
Yeah.
I believe, we are, I believe you guys are as well. I know the town is, I believe they are as well.
Oh, both sides are good.
Yeah.
Do you do a side by side?
Yeah. Totally the same thing. The only thing is, I think mine gets the direct mic feeds, theirs, I think it's going on the audio from the speaker, so we'll see. YouTube.
Alright, one minute.
Beach Talk is doing Facebook.
They're all still.
Yeah, no, they're not yet. But they are maybe.
We just, one of those guys just told us that they're here, that we can see them.
Do we want, do we want order? Have the ordering, so we can call.
I think that's probably a really good idea.
Just make sure Kathy's okay with that.
I can't keep them inside, ma'am.
Yeah, me neither.
Alright, everyone, if you could all take your seats, we're gonna get started again. I'm gonna be the bad guy today and keep time, so. Alright, now, everyone, a lot of you have been waiting very patiently to speak, I have twenty-two speakers signed up. Twenty-three speakers, twenty-four speakers, okay. Well, here's, here's what I'm gonna ask you to do. We're allotting one hour total public comments, because we wanna make sure that we have time to get back to conversation of resolving this issue. If you sign up to speak, but you agree with comments made by other speakers, and their sentiments, don't feel the need to repeat what's already been said, but you can come on up, indicate that you agree with, with the other parties, and that will help move it along, it'll also help move us through a little faster, I've had a number of people stop me during the break, who aren't gonna be able to stay for much longer, we wanna make sure we get through as many speakers as possible, and have everyone have an opportunity to be heard. Again, this is just the first step in this process, it's not the last step, it's not gonna be the last opportunity for public comment, but it is the first one, and as I addressed earlier, what we're trying to do here is come up with solutions, so, to the degree you have input that would be solution oriented, I think that would take the priority over just about anything else. Alright, with that, I'm gonna start, go ahead and, and call through the names, and then at the end, if I don't have anyone here, I'll, I'll ask those who haven't signed up to come up and speak. I'm gonna go with John King.
John R. King, Fort Myers Beach Council member. We're here because we both signed an interlocal agreement for the rebuild, continuing operation of Fort Myers Beach Elementary. The process has gotten us here, has been less than open, transparent, honest, and inclusive on part of the school district. Because of this interlocal agreement, we are partners, and deserve to be included in the decisions affecting our school. It feels like the lesson the district is trying to teach our students is not to honor agreements. We're here today, again, to negotiate in good faith. I implore you, help this community, let's get back to working together. As we've shown before, there's nothing we can't accomplish for our kids, and their teachers, and these kids are A-plus students.
Thank you, Mr. King. Derek Felder.
Derek Felder, for the record, Lee County taxpayer. I am here to support the school district, and whatever they decide to do, is a fiscal responsibility on their behalf. I like Mr. Carlin, where I like all the facts and the information. If it means not continuing with the school, and continuing to blossom for the other elementary school, then so be it, that's what is fiscally responsible. If it means removing the existing school, and rebuilding it to a new resilient, higher elevation school, then so be it. I support whatever the school decides to do to rebuild a responsible fiscal resilience.
Thank you. Next speaker is John McLean.
Good afternoon, John McLean, I'm actually a member of the LPA on the town of Fort Myers Beach, and therefore also a member of the historic preservation agency. I actually attended the fundraiser that Dr. Carlin you had on the island, and listened to your impassioned support of the students and of the island, and contributed to your election campaign, actually. I have to say that I'm pleased to see that this process is underway, mostly because we have been operating under a spirit of great cooperation and collaboration, and yet, I honestly believe that we have not seen that effort put forth by the school district. We have seen a lack of promises met, a lack of transparency, disengagement, and quite frankly, it really hasn't felt like there has been collaboration or cooperation. So, this process, initiated by the town, and begrudgingly, it appeared, acquiesced by the board, I would implore you to be open, to listen to everything that is spoke forward, and let's move forward to, for the best of our students. We know that there can be a fiscally responsible solution to educate the kids on this island, on our island, and it is absolutely imperative for our community to have a strong local school, so that we are not just a tourist destination, but we are an active, growing community.
Thank you, Mr. McLean.
Mr. Rooney, if I could just say, we got a report from our team that they can't really hear you, folks, for the public comment very clearly through the broadcast, so if you could, just be sure to speak loudly into the mic directly, get as close to it as you can, thank you.
And if you can, you can just ask Mr. King to speak for you, everyone can hear him. Alright, next I have Jackie Lizak, and I apologize if I pronounced that wrong.
Good afternoon, Jackie Lizak, the president and CEO of the Fort Myers Beach Chamber of Commerce, here to represent the businesses on the beach, who unfortunately can't all be here today, because they are actively working in their businesses on the island, and trying to restore our economic vitality. I'd like to read to you some of the excerpts of the letters I've received, some of these the school board has received, but not all of them, and there are more coming. The businesses are the backbone of the economic community of Fort Myers Beach, they are essential to the recovery of our island, and they, and their employees, count on a reliable elementary school on the island for their children to attend. Without a school on our island, it will hinder employment opportunities, it will hinder the workers of the beach being able to bring their children to a safe learning environment that has for decades provided the education that our island children need. Let me remind you, that school's been there since the forties, fifties, it's flooded twice. It flooded in Ian, and it flooded in, not Milton, as everyone's trying to say, but the one after. No, we had Lean, and then Milton, then Ian, then Debbie, but it's only flooded twice, so, please let's not forget that fact. Excerpts, not only for some of the business owners, but some of the business owners that are now actively running businesses, attended the Beach Elementary School, just so you know. This came in from Alex King today, economically speaking, we've had three families in the last four weeks who have refused or turned away from homes, multi-million dollar homes on our island, because we do not have a Beach Elementary School, and they have small children. One single dad with a set of twins, a couple from the Cape with a four-year-old and an eight-year-old, and when they asked about the school system and where their children would attend, and they were told that there was no operating school on the beach currently, they said, "No, thank you." They said, "No, thank you," to a $2.299 million home. And I'd like to reference back to the demographer who told us, when we were fighting for the beach school after Ian, that children don't live in million-dollar homes. Really? Give me a break. So here's another comment, from Dawn Miller at The Whale. They're about to open a multi-million dollar business establishment on the island, they live on the island, there are children and grandchildren on the island, and she basically states here that they are going to encourage all employees who have small children to enroll their children on our island school, so that the kids are close to them during the workday, and if there are problems, they can be there, they can attend after-school and before-school events with their children. These are economic indicators, these are not just faces and names, this is part of what makes business hum on Fort Myers Beach.
Ms. Lizak, thank you very much.
Pink Shell, Diamond Head, Doc Fords, these are big companies, folks.
Thank you.
I would like to have this entered into the record, please, all of these documents.
If you wanna just leave them on, if you wanna leave them right there on that chair, right there, we'll make sure.
Thank you very much.
Next I have Jenny Tardif, and she'll be followed by Joanne Semner.
Hi, my name is Jenny Tardif Paradiso, I'm an alumnus of Beach School, I'm on the PTO Board and also the ad hoc committee. For years now, I've been working collectively with the town, families, district, businesses, and our entire community to get our school open and to keep it open. I've been at most meetings, all the way back to October of 2022, even recently, when they were changed to weekly meetings, where we talked in circles, week after week, I made sure to clear my schedule and just show up. So my first question is for Dr. Carlin, why didn't you show up? Common courtesy, you're an elected official, you campaigned on the island, a platform that we deserved a school. We all heard you say it, and not even a single showing. We've worked so hard during an extremely hard time, all the while trying to keep it together for our children, the ones you're sworn to take care of. I heard this where I'm in speech about accountability, yet I see none. You spoke of empowering parents, well, we're here, and we've been here, and you won't even give us the time of day. Back to my questions, why gut our school staffing? We already cut our staff in half, the ILA says fully funded, but it's fully funded, why don't we have a second grade? Why did you absorb second grade after school started? You ripped brothers and sisters apart, kids that have already lost everything. Why do you continually tell people that they can't enroll in our school? For decades, you have been doing this, this is not new, even when we were building the ILA, the district was still telling people, "No." We know you're still doing it this year, and the only reason we found out is because the parents needed the aftercare at Bay Oaks. So you're being cruel and dishonest. The district has already admitted it never reached out to the town about the enrollment or the numbers, and we all know why, that's why they call it the long game. Another item that needs clarity is the FEMA money, the state has already told us there's been no applications submitted to use that money for other purposes. That's theft. I'm begging you for some clear forward thinking, our town is growing, businesses are reopening every day, if you build it, they will come? How about if you let us do what we all agreed to after months of negotiation, they will come? Let us fill up these classrooms with kids from all over, whether they live on the island, near the island, or have friends and family on the island. It's just crazy to waste all this time and energy, three years, on both sides. I'm asking you to give us back the time stolen from the ILA, give us back all of our grades, K through five, and at the end of the timeline, if we're unable to meet the requirements, we transfer out of the regular public school system, just like it says in the ILA. I know, it may make us a public or a private charter, which is not what I want, but here's the thing, we have never not been open to finding a solution, and I don't think you guys can say the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Semner.
Hello, I'm Joanne Semner, can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine.
I just want you to know, we could not hear you or the lady with the glasses back there. So, I'm looking for truth, honesty, integrity, and accountability from the Lee County School Board. We haven't seen that. And the lady with the glasses, I'm sorry, I don't, you know your name, because I couldn't hear it, but you are showing facts that are wrong. Those facts are wrong, I'm a fact witness in court, I testify as an expert witness, your facts are wrong. You actually said in there, you said twenty children from the town, from Estero Island. We are more than just Estero Island, we're St. Carlos Island, we're Boardwalk, Haver, Cielta Isles is a huge community, and they're building another, another section right now. There's Palm Isle, there's Tip Top Isle, and then there's another community across from Walmart that's full of single-family duplexes and fourplexes with children. Your facts are wrong. You're talking about how much taxes that the town pays, you forget about all the stuff that's off-island. You're just wrong. So how do we fix that? How do we fix the facts? Excuse me, how do we fix the facts?
I'm sorry, this is public comments, not a question and answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, and I'm also a licensed contractor, I can tell you some things about the building, you're wrong, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Fay Hadair, followed by Alexis Cooper. Fay Hadair, I apologize if I pronounced it wrong. Yes, that's it, sorry. Looks like an H, not an L, I'm sorry.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. I come to you as a thirty-seven-year administrator of school districts in Michigan, as a teacher, a principal, assistant superintendent, a superintendent, and then a college professor. We moved, and I know Ken very well, my daughter-in-law worked at Veterans with Ken. I come to you, we moved to Fort Myers Beach, looked at lots of places in Cape Coral, looked at places in Naples, we came to Fort Myers Beach because it was a community. First thing I did when I got there, I got to know Larry Woods, went there to volunteer to help with the kids, and do things because it was a community. It wasn't just, and please excuse what I'm going to say, it just wasn't an island of old, rich people. It was an island that was a community, that was working together. I think I hear you saying that you wanna work together and possibly do some type of charter school, whether it's a public or a private, and I have a lot of feelings about that, because I went to four hundred and forty-two schools in Michigan, as a, as a college professor, and there's a lot of problems with some charter schools, some of them, you're better off if it's a community school. Everyone is involved, everyone is part of it, and everyone enjoys it, and works together. So hopefully you will come together, and hopefully we will keep a school on Fort Myers Beach, thank you.
Thank you. Alexis Cooper, and she'll be followed by Trista Walker. Okay. That's alright. I'm not gonna allow you to tack on time for each one of the children that you bring, unless they speak for themselves. Be careful with the mama bear.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Alexis Cooper, and I am a parent of a first grader at Fort Myers Beach, and I just wanna start by acknowledging that hurricanes can cause damage, and we understand the challenges that the district faces in maintaining the school buildings. However, there is an interlocal agreement in place that clearly requires that the school to be repaired and reopened. The district cannot refuse to reopen the school on the grounds of financial concern, when there is a binding agreement requiring its operation. Dr. Denise Carlin, you campaigned saying that you believed our island deserves a school, now I feel that you lied to us just to get our vote. I never would have entrusted the Lee County School District with my child's education if I knew that that was the case. This school service is a real and pressing need in our community, families, including my own, rely on it for quality education. Delays in reopening are directly harming students' academic progress, social development, and emotional well-being. My daughter, for example, is struggling because her school experience has been disrupted multiple times. The closure is not just a financial or administrative matter, is it affecting real children in real ways, including their mental health and stability? The same children you all care, claim you care about, yet none of you have been there for them. None of you have stepped up in support of our school, or taken the time to talk to any of us parents about the situation. Instead, a sham of a consult was hired to intentionally give you all the results you wanted to close our school. Please explain how a brand-new school has extensive termite damage, that doesn't exactly sound logical. Given the ILA, the demonstrated demand, and the fact that the hurricane damage was minimal, we respectfully ask that the district fulfill its legal obligation and commit to reopening the school promptly. Every day off has another delay for children and missing out on the education that they are entitled to.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Trista Walker, followed by Jack Walker.
Thank you. I'm Trista Walker, I'm a proud mom of a former Beach Elementary kiddo, but once you're a beach school mom, you're forever a beach school mom. She got me caught up. From the moment we joined this school, we knew it was something special, not just a sign of waves, it was a feeling of belonging. Beach Elementary isn't just where our kids learn, it's where our community, we're stronger. The teachers know every child by name, families show up one another, kindness is our common language. Beach Elementary didn't just welcome us when we moved here, almost eight years ago, it made the whole community better, one smile and a little kiddo at a time. When we moved here, and the first book we found in our house was this book, and it was about the history of Fort Myers Beach, and it talked about how the community of Fort Myers Beach in nineteen thirty-three came together for twenty-seven little kiddos, and it created Fort Myers Beach Elementary, twenty-seven kids, the community did this because it was important. Traditionally, a school has been seen as one of the essential institutions that defines the functioning community alongside things like place of worship, local government, and markets. A school symbolizes that families live here, the community is planning for the future. and raise the next generation. And I'm also here to represent, I've recently become a Realtor with the Alex King Group on Fort Myers Beach, and part of the reason I joined this journey of becoming a Realtor is because of Fort Myers Beach and the community that it is. And as Jackie shared, some of the statements, I'm sitting in open houses, and I'm seeing this, and my colleagues are seeing this, and we had the family with five children that recently came in, and they asked for a local school, and they had to leave because they can't move here because there's no school on our island. We had a single dad and his twins with their old pair, they wanted to buy a house, but there was no school available on Fort Myers Beach. They said, "Sorry, we're going to look elsewhere." We also had a couple from Cape Coral that came in with a four and eight-year-old and wanted to move to Fort Myers Beach so badly. They asked about the school system and where their children would go, and we had to explain that it isn't a school right now, and they said, "No, thank you." And in summary, many of these families won't move here, and when we moved here, we couldn't believe that it was a community, it was a town. It wasn't just buildings, it's the people that's here, and part of that is our children, and our children are our future. And so I believe, and our families believe, Fort Myers Beach needs a new school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
I'm Jack Walker. Lived on the island since 2018, and I can tell you that the legacy and the history that's associated with the Beach Elementary School is incredibly important. 2019, our son Charlie was enrolled at the Beach Elementary School, and I was constantly amazed how many times we'd be out at local staff, or Schmeintz, or restaurants, or wherever we were on the island, and so many people would come up and say, "Hey, Charlie, you know, are you going to the elementary here? Are you going to the Beach School?" And they'd say, "Sure." And, you know, they'd respond back, "Who's your teacher?" You know, say, "Mrs. Hill," or whoever it was, and they'd say, "Yeah, you know, I had her too," because it was amazing to me that the teachers at the school were there and liked the time that they were. Fifteen, twenty years was not uncommon. And on top of that, there was just a camaraderie right away, just to be able to say, "Hey, I went to that same school, and my handprints are on the sidewalk at the school." And that was always touching to me. So the legacy and the history of that school are incredibly important, and I believe we've got to carry that on to future generations. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Doreen Jacobs, followed by Sawyer Narousse.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my name's Doreen Jacoby. I'm here as a mother, almost yeah, a CEO, and a member of this community. My family came to Fort Myers Beach from Germany because we wanted to live free, to raise our children in a place built on honesty, fairness, and accountability. After Hurricane Ian, an inter-local agreement was signed committing to rebuild Fort Myers Beach Elementary and fund it at least through 26, 27. That agreement is a contract, legally binding, not symbolic. As someone who manages contracts at large projects, I'll say it plainly, a contract is a contract is a contract. That is a line that my son, who's a fourth grader and sitting here with me today, reminded me of. It's from the movie Matoka. He also asked me, right afterwards, a month, if a contract with a public school district means nothing, what message is sent to us as children? That breaking an agreement or breaking the law is okay? I had no answer. After Hurricane Milton, our school took minor water damage, the kind a professional team could repair in months. Instead, the district has delayed, deflected, not communicated, not been transparent, and without any words or reaction to our countless attempts of communicating with you, our budget was cut, and so much so that we no longer have a second grade and fourth and fifth are combined, which is actually causing health problems for some of our children. So I would really like some answers to a couple of questions that we've been trying to get answers to for a long time. One, when will Fort Myers Beach Elementary be rebuilt? Please provide a start date and a timeline. What has the district actively done to support FMBE enrollment and bring students back? Because contrary to what was stated, you'd been telling people that our school was closed, and you have not been helping in bringing enrollment numbers up. What steps will you take to restore funding and staffing so our students no longer have to go to another school or combine a classroom, or study in one classroom? And finally, with the discussion of a charter school and everything that is on the table, how are you planning to help the currently enrolled students at FMBE? Because time is of the essence here. They are suffering, their educational paths have been continuously disrupted, and they do not feel loved by you at all. They have lost all their faith, actually, in the district. I want to close by saying that our children are watching how we will handle this moment, and they are learning what leadership, integrity, and community really mean. You have a chance today. You have a chance to show them that promises matter, that when leaders give their word, they keep it. So rebuild our school, rebuild the trust, and rebuild the future of Fort Myers Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sawyer Nurse. I'm in second grade and have been a student at Fort Myers Beach Elementary since kindergarten. A while back, you made a decision that I would be switched to heights. You made that decision without my mom and dad, and I'm very upset. Fort Myers Beach Elementary is a family to me. When you took me away from there, you also took me away from my brother. It isn't fair. Why us second graders? Why can't we be put in the third grade class with our friends that we started kindergarten? Fourth and fifth are in the same class, and so are first and kindergarten. So why can't second and third be? I love the Beach School. I want to go back to it. Please don't take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ellen Vaughn, followed by Robert Louche.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Elliott, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Susan Elliott, and I'm the grandmother of Sawyer Nurse, which I'm very proud of for standing up here and stating her feelings. We remained fairly quiet through most of this. My son and Epps daughter-in-law have done a very good job with the kids, and it shows. When you look at her, it shows what the Beach Elementary has done for my granddaughter as well. She's newly eight years old, very well-spoken, very poised, very amazing little girl. To go back a few years, she firsthand knows what a hurricane is like because she's been in my walk-in closet. She was present with her brother during Hurricane Ian, and has endured things that no one in this room, unless they were there, could possibly imagine. She arose from that house the next morning, and my son tried everything to get her off the island. She was trapped there for a few days, no water, and still, everything was fine. She rolled with the punches. She had to move to Ohio for a while to gain some stability before coming back and going back to her elementary. She and her brother have done amazingly well, they go back to their school, Sawyer starts kindergarten, and a month later, Ian hit. All of those things have happened to her, and the reason I go back through it all is to say that nothing broke her. A few weeks ago, you made a very poor decision to send her second-grade class of only three students over to another school in which you did not ask her parents. Her parents did not sign a paper saying it was okay for their child, their children. To go through this, her brother is in fourth grade, you've alienated her from her own brother. You've alienated her from her school family and all of her friends, and still, she has the nerve to stand up here as newly eight-year-old and tell you with poise and perfection what she feels. She sits back there and looks up and says, "All these dogs, and nobody can decide in three years what we're going to do with this school. It's not that hard, Gigi." And she is correct. One thing I can promise you is, I am a fact-finder as well, and a lot of those facts are not true. But even if I just broke down the facts you offered, it basically cost you nothing, and you made a million dollars on Hurricane Ian for Fort Myers Beach Elementary. Let's go back to the numbers. I have a degree in finance. If you need help, contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ellen Vaughn, followed by Robert Louche.
I'm Ellen Vaughn, I'm a resident of Fort Myers Beach and have been for a long time. As you have heard from many of the other speakers, Fort Myers Beach is a community. It is a community in part because it has a school. I stand here before you as someone who has my children were in school a very long time ago, but I can tell you, whenever you go anywhere and you run into someone that's a Fort Myers Beach alumni, they proudly state it. They could be 50 years old, they could be whatever, they could be 20 years old, they wear that as a badge of honor. Please restore our school. Thank you.
My name is Robert Louche, and I am a taxpayer in Lee County, and I also live in Benita Springs. And the takeaway from this meeting that I came away with is that bringing whatever repair you're going to make to this school will not bring it up to hurricane standards today. That is very discouraging for me as a taxpayer. I'm involved, I can tell you right now, I am the president of the community that has a commuting building right on the Estero Bay. We went through Hurricane Ian. We had to bring that building up to hurricane standards. It was not easy, it took a long time, we had to go through a lot of red tape, but we did it. And as a result, when Hurricane Milton, Hurricane Helene came in, we had no damage. The building withstood. When you have, and I think all of you living on the island know this, everybody that's living near the coast, stormwater, soft stormwater does a tremendous damage to the electrical system. You have to bring this building up to code, because if you don't, then we have the definition of insanity. It's doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. And you know, we talk about the children, this is bad for the children not to bring this building up to code, because what you're going to be doing is, you're going to have future hurricanes, you're going to have to close the building down, you have to send them to a different school. Get it right done the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, I have Mario Trevino, followed by Nancy Walker.
Thank you for your time today. I've heard a lot of really incredible facts from both sides, and obviously, this room is full of emotion. Whenever you deal with children, that's just what you expect. I'm not going to go over what anybody else said, but it seems to me that if you boil all this down to the very common denominators, I'm not going to stand here and say that Fort Myers Beach doesn't deserve a school. Charter school, public school, whatever. But what it boils down to, to me, is that when this school, this particular building was built, long ago as it was, and I know it's a historical building, it was built in a place that, according to our modern standards, would be inappropriate. Someone said today, five feet below flood level, whatever FEMA established, has flood level. I don't even know if it would be insurable if it was rebuilt. So what I can say is, I don't think that investing more millions and billions and millions of dollars into a building that will still be susceptible makes that much sense. Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Walker, I have Patrick Van Ness.
Hi, I'm Nancy Walker. I've lived on Fort Myers Beach for over 20 years. I do not have children in the school. I'm here as a taxpayer. I'm a retiree. You may think I'm going to be against opening the school, but I am not. When you look at the numbers and the tax revenue generated by Fort Myers Beach for the school district, first, I find it incredulous that you guys don't have the numbers. That's just unbelievable. The 29 million, the 24 million, that came from somewhere. We give you that. 50 students, what are you making? We give you $200,000 per student? At least, maybe 300 if we're going with those numbers? Come on, you can rebuild the school. It's part of our town. And by your own numbers, with Ian, 11 million something you got from FEMA, and your numbers, a little over 8 million you spent. So there's money you made on Ian. Why haven't you applied for FEMA for the other storms? Just a question. My other thing is, you stated that inclusivity, not geography, determines how you make your decisions. Well, this sounds a little bit geographically, I don't know, maybe, you know, you're using geography of our barrier island to make this decision, okay? It sounds a little discriminatory to me. Okay, so I'm a retiree, I think you should put the money into it, you're making money off of Fort Myers Beach. I want to know where my money, I just got my tax bill yesterday, I have a little cottage, I'm homesteaded, I pay almost two grand a year for school taxes. I'm glad that it goes to these kids here. I would gladly pay that every year. I want to know where it goes. And to me, it sounds like you're not going to spend it on our kids, and I want you to spend it on our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Van Ness. I'm a parent, resident, Ad Hoc Committee member, and as a professional, I'm a certified urban planner. I had a statement prepared here today, and I'm going to put this aside because I want to address some of the comments that were made. There was discussion about the administration, and I want to be clear, I'm not talking about the elected officials on the school board, the administration saying they have negotiated a good thing. And I would welcome any questions to provide evidence, because we have plenty of evidence. What we've received is placation and delay. And the reason I bring this up is, the placation and the delay is strategic and intentional. What it does is, it widows down our numbers, the number of students. The only argument that you have against this school is fiscal responsibility, it's based on dollars per student. Keep delaying, keep placating, the numbers will go down, and you will prove exactly what you want to prove. So that's why I bring that up. Next thing I want to say is, as a professional, I've worked on a ton of development on this island. We are redeveloping, we are getting developers to invest millions and millions of dollars. All these developers are committed, they have put this in their zoning ordinance, they will promote the school, they will provide flexible schedules, and they will increase the enrollment at our school. But again, we keep bringing this up, we offer solutions, and I haven't seen one report, I haven't seen any effort to incorporate that in your models. So what I'm going to leave you with today is, Mr. P. Bruno was very nice in reminding us that you have constitutional and statutory authority over where schools are built or torn down. I want to remind you that local government has constitutional and statutory authority over land use and zoning, and as long as these people run Fort Myers Beach, the zoning for that school will never allow anything else to bother the school. Thank you very much.
Don't worry, there's still a few more names in front of you, you've got to have plenty of time, don't worry. Next, I have Heather Swedberg, followed by Robert Kispeth, and then Rebecca Link.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Heather Swedberg. My husband and I are both physicians residing on Fort Myers Beach and proud parents to a three-year-old little boy who deserves to grow up in the same kind of close-knit community that once defined our island. We all know Fort Myers Beach Elementary wasn't just a school, it was a great school. It was the heart, a gathering place, a symbol of hope after devastation. When our island flooded, and I was pregnant, neighbors helped neighbors, we rebuilt homes, businesses, and spirits. But while our community showed up, the same can't be said for the decision-makers who are supposed to fight for our kids. Over the past two years, families like ours have watched promises shift, timelines blur, and decisions made behind closed doors. It's hard not to feel that the will of this community has been ignored, but what's at stake isn't politics, it's the future of Fort Myers Beach itself. If we lose our school, we lose young families like my own family. We lose the next generation of islanders who will carry this place forward. Reopening Fort Myers Beach Elementary isn't just about classrooms, it's about restoring faith that our voices still It was the heartbeat, a gathering place, a symbol of hope after devastation. When our island flooded, and I was pregnant, neighbors helped neighbors, we rebuilt homes, businesses, and spirits. But while our community showed up, the same can't be said for the decision-makers who are supposed to fight for our kids. Over the past two years, families like ours have watched promises shift, timelines blur, and decisions made behind closed doors. It's hard not to feel that the will of this community has been ignored. But what's at stake isn't politics, it's the future of Fort Myers Beach itself. If we lose our school, we lose young families like my own family. We lose the next generation of islanders who will carry this place forward. Reopening Fort Myers Beach Elementary isn't just about classroom, it's about restoring faith that our voices still matter. Charter schools, I've been hearing a lot of talk about, might sound like a solution, but they take the public out of public education. Our island school didn't just teach reading and math, it built a community. Turning it over to a private board removes that shared ownership. We don't need a charter school, we need our public school back, accountable to the families who live here. We're not asking for miracles, we're asking for integrity, transparency, and action that matches the resilience we've already shown. Please work with us. Let parents, teachers, and local leaders sit at the table to rebuild a plan that keeps public education on the island. We have the passion, the volunteers, and the community support. We just need the district's partnership to make it happen. Please, I beg you, don't erase what this community fought so hard to save. Bring our school home.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Kispeth, Chief Operations Officer for TPI Hospitality. I'm also on the Board of Chamber of Commerce of Fort Myers Beach, and I also am a resident in Lee County. As one of the largest employers on Fort Myers Beach, we currently employ over five hundred associates with continuing activity to recruit additional associates. As the island continues recovery and revitalization, return of jobs to Margaritaville, and other businesses reopening, has sparked a renewed sense of momentum of growth. A strong local school is a critical part to this progress. The Fort Myers Beach School is vital to attracting and retaining employees essential to our local economy. Its reputation for providing top-tier education and its partnership with Bay Oaks for Before, After, and Summer School offers invaluable support to working families on the island. Having a high-quality, convenient school located benefits the current employees a compelling incentive to recruit new talent to the beach. It's an asset that we cannot afford to lose. Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Link, I'm going to have Teri Kane, and then we'll take any additional speakers after that.
Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Link. I recently, as in last evening, had the honor to be elected to the Town Council of Fort Myers Beach. And I'm here today as a concerned resident, a parent ally, and a committed partner in education and community. First, I want to thank you, to the many parents, faculty, local business owners, and neighbors who have tirelessly advocated for the Beach Elementary School. We know what it means. It's not just bricks and mortar, but it's the heart and spirit of our island community. I respectfully ask that the district reconsider any decisions to permanently close or raze the campus until the following has been demonstrated. Number one, a fully transparent rebuild. A plan that engages our community, our parents, our staff, our students, and our residents as full partners in the design and timeline. Two, a cost-benefit analysis that reflects not just short-term savings, but long-term value to our children, our town character, our tourism, our business resilience, and our identity as Fort Myers Beach. Three, preserve or incorporate the historic elements of the campus in any rebuild, recognizing that the loss of that school is a loss of our community. Four, the relocation or merger of us be the last resort for any interim plan. Fully support a fast reopening of the Beach campus. As a newly-elected council member, I pledge my full willingness to partner with the school district, to help secure funding, to support community meetings, to build public-private partnerships, and ensure students return to the Beach campus as soon as feasible. This is not a fight between the town and the district. It's a collaboration for the benefit of our children and our future. Today I ask the district to pause any irreversible actions, and I think I've heard that you've done that, and I thank you for that. We ask for a public timeline for reopening, a presentation of rebuild options within thirty to sixty days, and a community forum where residents can voice their preferred path forward. In closing, Fort Myers Beach has shown enormous strength recovering from these storms. We've rebuilt homes, we've reopened businesses. Strength, and we've kept our spirit alive. The Beach Elementary School is one of the keys to that spirit, a symbol that we invest in our children, in our future, and in the community we love.
Thank you, Ms. Link.
Let's not lose when hope and partnership remains possible.
Kane.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak today. I'm Teri Kane, fifth-year Fort Myers Beach resident, proud parent of two graduates of Fort Myers Beach Elementary School. I have two issues that I would like you to reconsider. One again is the enrollment, you've heard a lot about the enrollment, and I think you need to understand, which many people may not unless you live on the island, that we are a seasonal resort community. Those of us who live there accept this, and many of us were transient workers like myself, who went up to the Northeast, worked in the summertime, and came back for eight or nine months and worked on Fort Myers Beach. When I had my children in school, we would start the school year with a certain amount of students. By October, our classrooms were doubling in size because these people who work the beach, I'm speaking for cooks, restaurant workers, chambermaids, I was one of them, and we are the people that would put our children in these schools and in our school until I was able to move on Fort Myers Beach year-round. These are the people that you are telling, no more, you're the working class, and you no longer can have your children at Fort Myers Beach Elementary School. I find this highly disturbing. So I would like you to reassess your enrollment, because we have a fluid enrollment on Fort Myers Beach. We do include our workers, we used to, until three years ago, to have their students on Fort Myers Beach. It's a wonderful joy to have your child close to where you work. I know, I went through a lot of it. The other thing I find a little insulting is the fact that people keep telling us that people can't afford to live on Fort Myers Beach. And you've heard that some people are no longer coming to Fort Myers Beach to buy homes because we have no school. And that is also very, very disturbing. There are places where you can live on Fort Myers Beach, and you talk about a young family. Well, I hate to tell you, I was not a young family. I did not have children until I was forty. So I could afford to live on Fort Myers Beach. My son is a successful young man. I would love for him to move back to Fort Myers Beach, but there's no school. So I would like you to reconsider two of those issues. There's a lot more issues, I could stand up here all day, people who know me know I could. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. All right, sir.
Hi, my name is John Cosse. I've been involved in this process the whole time. I just want us to really start talking to one another, okay? You guys find risk in the historical building, I get it. We want the historical building, that our town loves it, we want it. Why don't you just hand it over to our town? Why don't you hand the historical building over to our town and give them the opportunity? I can't speak for the town, but let them take control of it if they want to take control of it. The six-million-dollar cafeteria build that gets thrown around here, I think we lose on how we came up with that number. You, the dish breaker, came to us, I was one of the leaders of the committee, and offered to build us a six-and-a-half-million-dollar portable campus after Ian that would have got our kids back in immediately. We came together as a group and said, no, it's a waste of taxpayer money. While we're mucking our homes and living through stuff that you can't imagine, we'll get our kids off the island. You take that six-and-a-half-million dollars and build us something permanent with it. And you agreed to do it. That's where that money came from. So I'm telling you that being pragmatic right now, I know you don't want a public school on that island, okay? I know the future could be charter. Why don't we start out with that six-and-a-half-million dollars as a negotiation point? Why don't you offer our town to take over the historical building so you don't have to worry about the risk of that in the future? And let us take that money and start building our school. I think that would be a kickoff point that would serve both sides well, and I'd like to see it happen. As far as, and I'm sorry to get, change speeds a little bit, but the other thing too is the communication and the openness, something Mr. Van Ness spoke about, please, stop placating us. Mr. Bruno, your comments weren't disingenuous, they were flat-out lies. We watched San Antonio have their entire school remediated and back in while we had mold growing on our walls. And I refuse to accept that you just couldn't get to it. I only bring that up, I'm not trying to take pokes, but I'm talking about the whole process here. Talk with our council members, talk with our town manager, open communication. I believe there's a path to where we can get somewhere to get our kids back on the island. I sense that you want that, I know that we want it. Let's please make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cosse.
Hi, my name's Ollie Curran, and I'm a Fort Myers Beach resident of fifty years. I have a daughter who's fifty-four, graduated from the Beach School, a son forty-two, and a granddaughter fourteen. We love the Beach School, we want the Beach School. And I have to say, on a personal basis, I live in the second oldest home on the island, and the hurricane has it up. Nothing happened other than flood downstairs. And that Beach School has been there for years, and we love it. And we cannot live on that beach without that Beach School. There's people here, they're my family, that's the Beach family, we have a Beach family, and that's what we love, and that's what we want to be. And please, people, open up your mind, your heart, be compassionate to the people of Fort Myers Beach and to my children when they come and they see that building. We love it. We cannot live on that beach without that building, we just love that. And by the way, on a personal basis, next time, please, we have so many buildings on the beach, have the meeting on the beach so we could all be Beach people. Thank you.
Thank you. This is another gentleman rising. Anyone else who didn't get a chance to sign in, you can go ahead and just line up behind him.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Sund, for the record. I want to thank the school district, Superintendent Carlin, Fort Myers Beach Town Council, Mayor Allers, for the opportunity to speak before you today. I appreciate the residents of Fort Myers Beach's passion for their historic school building. However, as a taxpayer of Lee County, I strongly believe that it would be a dereliction of the school board's fiduciary duties to the taxpayers of the county to continue pouring dollars into this facility. Unfortunately, the last few years have proven that the facility is just incapable of surviving the damage that we face from storms, which are a constant threat to our coastal community. This can come through the space of direct hits like Ian, near misses like Hurricane Milton, and even passing storms in the Gulf like Hurricane Helene, all of which capable of causing catastrophic damage that closes the school. I think it's important to note that even if FEMA were to pay a hundred percent of the cost every single time, and we just kept doing this over and over again, that FEMA dollars are not free money, they are taxpayer dollars. And any taxpayer dollars that we continue to put in this facility are at real risk of being washed away with the next storm. Our history is important, but we can't afford to sell out our future in an attempt to preserve the physical structures of our past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tyler Spradling. I'm a current resident of Fort Myers Beach, and I was raised on the beach, and I see the, I've had a firsthand experience of the impact of having community can have on someone as a product of Lee County's school district. I graduated from Cypress Lake High School in two thousand and eight, and then went on to pursue medical school, and since finished residency have returned to Fort Myers Beach as a practicing physician. Since that time, I have volunteered for Lee County School District, for the volunteer position for the football team, as well as conducting over five hundred free pre-serve participation sports visits for the district. So I think it's important to realize that the reason I decided to come back was instilled because of the Beach School and the community, and you will lose the type of people like myself to get back to the community without the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Mostero. I'm a resident homeowner on Fort Myers Beach. I'm a local business owner, and I'm a member of the Fort Myers Beach Chamber of Commerce, I'm a board member there. I'm also born and raised here in Florida. I'm a proud product of our state's public education system, from kindergarten, elementary school, all the way through university. Public schools shaped who I am, and they instilled in me a sense of belonging in my community. After Hurricane Ian, I made the extremely difficult decision to rebuild my home here. That decision was emotional, financial, and deeply personal. I chose to reinvest in this island because I believe in its future. But that future must include having a community, and a community needs a school. When I think about my future, potentially raising a family, building my business, and planting permanent roots, the presence of a neighborhood school matters. A community without a school quickly becomes a place people pass through, not a place people stay. Schools are not just classrooms, they're community centers, gathering spaces, and a part of our community's identity. They are where we meet our neighbors, where traditions are made, and where the next generation learns what it means to call Fort Myers Beach home. We need a school to remain a community for families, or we risk becoming a place without children, without community, without a future. In 2018, Lee County voters approved a half-cent sales tax increase to fund schools. Whenever do taxpayers vote to increase taxes? We recognize schools are so important, and that's why voters approved it. These kids are our future. Sometimes school and public services are more important than money, and this is one of those times. I urge you to rebuild our school. Fort Myers Beach deserves to remain a place where families can grow, not just visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is James Lee. I'm a property owner on the island, I'm a grandpa, I've got grandkids. One of the biggest challenges we're facing right now is the cost of everything. The five reasons why everything is going up in price is the cost of labor, the cost of labor, the cost of labor, and the most important part, the cost of labor. The building is already up. And when you look at this, the question is, every child is a gift. As a taxpayer, we have to ask ourselves also some tough questions. How many children are going to be living on the island? As a taxpayer, now for me, I pray that the school stays open, okay? The thing of when it's going to flood, as long as humans live on this island, it's going to flood. I guess the point being is, the building is already up, I would hope it stays open, but as a taxpayer, do we have enough precious little angels to go to the school? I appreciate the time, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Matt Price, CEO, Seagate Development Group, own ten acres on the island, and I am a Lee County resident as well. Here because Mayor Dan asked me to come. I mean, the mayor don't see eye to eye on everything, he voted against my project, we're still friendly though, we don't have to agree on everything, just like we all don't have to agree on everything. But there are also a lot of people in this audience who probably don't- But there are also a lot of people in this audience who probably don't like me, I'm sure that they're here, and I'm sure that's one of the reasons we're the local council person from yesterday. But one thing that I've learned going through this whole process with the town, and one thing I think I can agree with everyone here and with the mayor, is that once this school goes away, this is a tourist town. It is, you can do any study you want, you can do it. As soon as that school is gone, it becomes a tourist town. And my pitch when I came in to do my project, and I think some of the other developers that come in who are all local, wanted to keep the semblance of what Fort Myers Beach was. And my pitch was four or five big projects, get things started, go. It was not get rid of the school and part of lunch. And it may not happen immediately, but mark my words, if this school is gone, that's what's going to happen. And I don't think anybody wants that, including the developer in the room who owns the most property on the island. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Borkwin, my husband and I have been on the island since about 2009. We came here initially for vacation, we saw the beach, it was lovely. It took us a very short time to realize it wasn't just a beach island, it was a community. And the whole idea of community is very important to us. We are both retired teachers, we not only taught, but we raised four children. We're not on the beach, but we certainly have a very strong connection to education and to the beach school. We realized early on that on this very small, seven-mile barrier island, there is a community that involves clubs, organizations, churches, the library, and, most importantly, the beach elementary school. The families that are here are not all part of the glitzy things you see with the snowbirds that we possibly started off as, but have much so embraced the island. These kids have been through a lot. They were here during COVID, they were here during Ian, they're here trying to recover, they're here through Helene and Milton, and the kids soldier on. We had the opportunity to be down at the pier right after Ian, when the school had their little chorus there. And there was not a dry eye in the house as they sang their song that they reimagined and sang, and ultimately ended up on national TV courtesy of Lester Holt. If any of you can find that video, watch it. These kids are absolutely precious, and they deserve a whole lot better. They are our future, they should not be ignored. At this point on the island, three years later, the library is back, some of the churches are already back, and the rest of them are really moving hard to get there. We have made tremendous, tremendous progress. So if the churches are back, the library is back, then let's take care of our most precious commodity of the children. The school needs to be back. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it looks like you're our last speaker, and luckily we just have enough time left in it for you. Come on up.
I'm Lindsay Mackey, can you guys hear me? I'm a parent of three children, I live on Fort Myers Beach, we moved here, we moved to the island in 2020, and I have a kindergartner and a fourth grader. And after Ian, that was really hard on our family, but, and we spent our time coming and fighting for our school, and we're here again. I don't like to come and speak because it's pretty emotional for me, but who's going to tell my fourth grader that they're not going back to their school? Because these delays are impacting our families, and that's just the question I want to know, who's going to tell them? Because it's going to have to be told. I just feel like we're not getting any answers, and I have children that are at the school right now, so I would like to know.
Thank you. Sir, you will be our last speaker. So, you know, make it good.
I hope I'm the best. My name is Richard Kane, and I've lived on Fort Myers Beach for 55 years. I've been in business on the beach for 55 years. My sons have both gone to the beach school, got a very good education there. And for 55 years, I've been sending my tax dollars to the Lee County Board of Education. During that time, there was only one high school in Fort Myers, I was downtown Fort Myers High. My tax dollars supported the construction of every high school in Lee County, most all the elementary schools. And the beach school hasn't been rebuilt, hasn't received any huge funds, but we have supported the education of every student in all of Lee County. So I think Fort Myers Beach needs to get some of their money back. That's just fair. And all the bean counters need to realize that 25 years from now, whatever you spend on Fort Myers Beach School will seem like a steal, it'll be a good deal. The beach school is part of the community. It is a hub. Without the beach school, you don't have Boy Scouts, you won't have Girl Scouts, you won't have Little League, you won't have the kids on bicycles and parades, it's the part of the community. So I would just ask you to put aside all the concerns you have about money. Your taxes are going to go up no matter what. I'm 82 years old, the taxes never go down. But you do the right thing. Build the school for this community, or rebuild the one that's there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. So, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to give the parties an opportunity to break out and to caucus independently, but before we do that, we still have some members of the public here, is there anything, primarily I'm looking to the school district, is there anything that you want to respond, any answers to any of the questions that were raised, any clarifications, any issues that were raised before the public? I think a lot of them probably already started to sneak off, but to give them some answers to some of their questions, and if, and I'll give the town an opportunity afterwards. Now if not, that's okay, I just want to make sure, you know, what we're going to come to the next part of this is, we're going to break out, have an opportunity to come back, explore some of those early topics that have been discussed, including the charter option. And for the public, I think maybe it's unclear what that meant, when we're talking about charter in this context, we're talking about a municipal charter, we're talking about the city taking over and running a school, we're not talking about a third party coming in. Maybe a third party at some other point, but right now, the only two parties that can even have that conversation are the town and the district. So I think there was maybe a little confusion out there about charters being brought in as a private entity. With that, if there's no clarifications or any questions, we'll break out. What do we think, 10, 15 minutes for you guys to talk?
I just want, I just want to throw one question out there as we go in. I go back to my opening statements, and we talk about, you've been very vocal about you don't feel it's in the best public interest for taxpayers to put money into that building. I go back to my original question, why did you deny seeking mitigation funds through FEMA in the state? Why did you purposely not look for funding to build a bigger school? You made that decision, your board, you weren't on the board at the time, your board made that decision to purposely turn down, even after it was discussed, through mitigation funding, you turned it down. And now you want to tell us you don't want to put money, and we need to mitigate the school, we need to build it up because of all these storms. I would like to really know an answer as to why you turned down going after that funding. And if since, I believe you have said, submitted paperwork or in the process of submitting paperwork to reallocate the funds that you did get specifically for Fort Myers Beach Elementary, to rebuild that school. And in their actual letter, it specifically states mitigation funding was discussed and not sought by the applicant, which is the school board.
All right, Mayor Howlers, I'm going to allow the district, if they want to answer it now, if they want to come back and discuss it after we break out.
We will caucus for right now, and a caucus. We will come back and we'll answer the question, Mayor Howlers.
I'll pop in right before we end the caucus, just to make sure, you know, we've got some talking points to get started off again, so we have a productive conversation when we come back, but let's call it, let's see, it's 3:41 now, do we just want to come back at 4? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. We're all getting settled, I know we've lost a number of members of the public, but. Mayor, you left with a question, so I'm going to first turn it over to the district to see if they have a response to that, or any other, any other questions that came up, and then as the initiator of the process, I'll turn it back over to the town to see if the town has any first thoughts on moving forward.
So the, thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor, for the question. Two things that we would like to respond to, first is with regards to the mitigation. Ian hit on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and we have a purchase order that is indicating it's the, you can go ahead and proceed with the project that was issued on October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. So it was relatively quickly that we started the mitigation project, and then I'm going to invite Chris Thompson, who is our expert from Imperium, our consultant on FEMA, to be able to answer the rest of your questions.
And since many of you don't know me, my name is Chris Thomas. I'm a FEMA consultant for the district. I've got twenty years of emergency management experience, and during that time worked directly for FEMA, at FEMA Agro's in Washington DC. And just wanted to say that, wanting to provide some background understanding. But mainly, I'm here to just clarify some of the things, Mayor, to your point about mitigation. There was some questions about mitigation, and that term is used in two different ways. There is environmental remediation type mitigation, which happens immediately after a storm to protect the infrastructure, and a lot of that is done by companies like Cotton, that the district used. And then there's hazard mitigation, which is done oftentimes years after a disaster. And that is things like elevating, providing flood walls, and other types of infrastructure mitigation opportunities. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone is using the terms clearly when talking about mitigation, as far as whether it's environmental mediation, remediation, or whether that's hazard mitigation along the lines of infrastructure. FEMA does pay for environmental remediation mitigation under category B emergency protective measures. They also pay for hazard mitigation under infrastructure. In this instance, because this is buildings, it would be category E infrastructure mitigation opportunities under permanent work. The press release that I believe that you're mentioning, Mayor, did end up mentioning something about mitigation being discussed, but not being provided. I think a big clarifying point that perhaps both parties can get into later would be discussing how codes and standards might impact mitigation opportunities. As everybody knows, on both sides, codes and standards do a lot when having to come back up to code as far as elevating, hardening, and doing other mitigation opportunities. And so really what FEMA looks at is mitigation opportunities after codes and standards. I will also say, from having worked for FEMA, that a lot of times the press releases that do come out, sometimes will have boilerplate statements like mitigation was discussed, but not provided or asked for. I think it's worth also discussing and looking into that at a later time as well. All that to say that the mitigation process with FEMA, as everybody knows, it has been through individual assistance and public assistance programs with FEMA, takes a long time. And so it's a step-by-step process, and during the discussions, codes and standards played an important role on that as far as what FEMA would agree to for scope of repairs, as well as the costs associated with that. And the remediation mitigation was also something that was discussed with FEMA, but again, it's just a different type of mitigation provided under a different funding source.
Mr. Rooney, can I just ask a follow-up question, that since you seem to be the matter expert here? And reading, did you, first of all, have you read through what FEMA sent out the obligation letter? Did you, have you read that, forty-six seventy-three?
So I, I have read the project that is in grants portal. I have not read the news release that they put out, but I am familiar with news releases that FEMA usually puts out, yes, sir.
So in your, do you think, I mean, how grand does FEMA get? Because in that, in that press release, or in that, that's what they're calling it, is a press release, but in that obligation that they, that they released, it was very specific about rehabilitating six buildings and building six buildings to get back to the twelve structures. Those buildings have been destroyed. We've gotten no documentation showing that they can deviate, or can they deviate from, from that?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm not trying to end the line of questioning while, actually, I am trying to end the line of questioning. And not because I don't think it's valuable, but I think it's valuable if the town and the district move down a path where they're looking at spending money together or separately on these projects, then it starts to say, well, where's the accounting? You know, we could spend all day doing the forensic accounting of where money went and where it goes. And we'll be here a lot longer, we probably still won't get somewhere. So is there anything else, else from the district? The district's, okay, the district's closing, I want to turn it over to the town and see, does the town have anything, besides questions, which I know that they'll never end, but is there, is there anything from the town that would be like a first stab? But is there, is there anything from the Town that would be like a first stab at a process for looking towards resolution? You know, we've talked a lot about, you know, charters. We've talked about a couple of different things, but I think both communities have had an opportunity to see the concerns and have an opportunity to step into the shoes of the other to see what the barriers are. With that, does the Town have a starting point where they'd like to go?
Sure. So, you know, obviously, we, staff has communicated and we've had some discussions. And I know I've had discussions with both Denise and Dr. Savage and Bill in private about a scenario that we had talked about that everybody seemed to understand could possibly work, but needed to look further into it. And I think that's kind of where we're back. We certainly understand your caution with wanting to put money back into that historical building. I think you understand how important it is to our community to save that historical building, whether it's a school or not a school. It's important to us to save that. So I guess what we'll, we'll come out of the gate with, because I think it is a solution, as I've told you all privately, that I think it's something that works for both of us. It's not something that's ideal for either of us. It's not something that either of us wanted, but we couldn't control Mother Nature, right? So I guess our starting point would be, we would like to talk about, you know, we talk about the 11.3 million, say 12, roughly 12 million dollars. The Town would be willing to have the discussion. If the school board and school district is in potentially a long-term 100-year lease for a dollar a year, we'll take over the old historical building. We'll make sure that we get it rehabbed, not to be used as a school. And also, we would seek to have you pass through that dollar amount.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, did you say not to be used or to be used?
It wouldn't be used as the school, probably. I mean, we could still have those conversations if, you know, but we want to have a school. If that's, if that's something that we could do as a municipal charter, I'm not a charter school specialist. But if that's something that we could do as a new school is being built to do, I know you guys probably can't do that as the public school side of it. But if that's something that we could do as a municipal charter, we take that on until we get the new school built. We have had conversations with local builders who are looking to invest in our island, who we think we could partner with through, through public benefits, through other things, through charity, through, through just helping. We have a very strong and a lot of diverse backgrounds on our island that have told us, we can do it. You know, when you, we could build that school and we can get it operational for about the same amount of money that you have applied for and received from FEMA funding. That would, I think, achieve many things. It would achieve your fiscal responsibility to continue to get tax dollars from the town of Fort Myers Beach, which we all know will increase over the next 10, 20 years as we continue to rebuild. Fiscally, that's responsible on your half. It's on our half, it is, it is important for us to keep that school. As you heard here today, a lot of passionate people have said their grandkids have gone there. They've gone on to be doctors, lawyers, probably country strong and says and such or something. But that's what's important to us. We understand the fiscal responsibility. We're not trying to be, you know, we're not trying to hammer things down. I think you guys know us all well enough to understand that that's not it. We're just trying to be reasonable. We're just trying to provide a solution. And as much as I'll go back and say neither one of us thinks that is an ideal situation, I think it's the best situation. It still allows our kids to continue on for hopefully another 80 years in a building that none of us ever have to worry about again. It saves a historical building that we really, really cherish, that can be used for other things, not just for the town of Fort Myers Beach. It could be used for school board activities. It could be used for any taxpayer activity and Lee County can come down and use it. There's so many opportunities that could be done in that building to teach heritage of Lee County. I think it's a win-win, and I guess that's kind of where we're starting, is, I think that provides a really easy path to discussions to be able to alleviate a lot of pressures that both sides have right now. And with that, I'll leave it to any staff member that may, if I missed anything. Will, please?
Let me see if I, I've got it. So the Town is offering essentially to, to take over the facility and possibly operate it as a municipal charter school until a new facility is built. And then maybe continue to use the historical structure as a general public facility after that. Would the new school be something that the Town would be building as a charter school?
The request would be for the 12 million dollars from the Lee County School District to assist in building the new school.
Yes, whether that comes from the already agreed upon 6, 6.5 million, however, your numbers have to work on your end. But, you know, we're not building, you're not building a cafeteria. You're not, you're not gonna put any more money back into rehabilitating an old building or tearing it down or other things that, you know, you're not, you've already said you've spent a million dollars this year just on keeping it open and not getting worse. So all of those things combined with, again, the continued revenue that, you know, not just Fort Myers Beach, but all of the 33931 zip code will continue to put in. And I think, again, you've heard it from all the businesses here, and we've shown you after Hurricane Ian, we can get those numbers up and we will get those numbers up. We just want to keep the school that's been there for 80 years and show you. And I hope one day we can agree upon, we agree on this, we move forward. We can all get down there. We can cut the ribbon together and say, you guys were right. And you guys were right. At the time, it seemed like a tough decision, but now it's a really good decision. And we can all watch the kids run and play. That's our ultimate goal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I turn it over to the District, I don't, I see head nodding, so I don't think the District's gonna, you know, say no, knock it out. But I want, what I want to focus on is that expectation setting for the Town. You know, the process for school facilities, charter schools, the process for disposition of, of public school property, all that is a complicated mess. I'm sure Dr. Kohler could tell you what she knows about it. And so if this is a, if this is a path that there's, you know, a reasonable opportunity to explore, what I would like to see is, you know, the District acknowledge that that's an opportunity they'd like to explore further. And then we're gonna close for the day because we're not gonna get the answers to those questions today. Those are, those are things that are gonna need to have follow-up. Your staffs are gonna need to get together. There may need to be additional follow-ups before anything can really come about.
I'd like to ask just a clarifying question so I make sure, because I like how you, you know, clarified. So that, when you talk about the beach, taking over the historical building, does that include then, so you mentioned the 11 to 12 million dollars somewhere that we would pay for that? Does that include the donation of the land, which also has a tangible value?
Probably.
You said a hundred year lease or we retain the property?
Correct. And it's important, and it's important to point out that that property is zone industrial. We don't want to change that. Or institution, I'm sorry, institution. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
We, we hold the land.
You hold the land. We would be leasing it from you. We do not want to change the zoning of it. We want to keep it a school. That's what it's intended. That whole case.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
And we are looking at basically a dollar a year lease.
Nominal value, yeah, I understand. Okay, so can I restate?
Yes, please.
Derek, just so I understand and make sure if I have any other questions. So basically, a nominal value lease for whatever amount of time, because we have statutes that kind of control about those things as well. So we'll have to verify the length of time, but it should be pretty extensive length of time. And you would use that as a municipal charter in the beginning until such time as you're able to build the school. And then once you build the school, that building will become a museum or whatever else the Town would like to do with it. That's essentially what we're talking about. And then you're asking the District to contribute 12 million dollars to help build the school. Did I get everything?
That's correct.
I think you got it.
And we get a dollar a year for the rent.
Yes.
Just clarifying, for a hundred years.
Big question, is there tax on that?
Yeah, in a school, yeah.
Okay, now, real quick, just for the, for the members of the public. You know, this, this probably, it sounds like more discussion, more pushing things back. Let me explain what the process here is. So we've identified the issues. Parties have a path, move forward, explore an alternative to settlement, this issue. Ultimately, it'll either come back to a joint meeting or separately if things get worked out between the parties and they, and they're able to present an opportunity to the boards respectively to vote on. The public will have an opportunity to participate at that, at that level. And so there, there's still more process. There's a process for you to get involved. But let me just point this out. It's been three years since Hurricane Ian, a year since everyone's rebuilding from the last two hurricanes. If this went to litigation, and I'm not even, you know, look, I had a whole thing to talk about the ILA and what could happen. I don't have to get into that. If this went to litigation, you're looking at three years, parties are gonna put their pencils down. They're not gonna design things. They're not gonna spend money doing stuff. You come out of that, then you start another multi-year process to start the school. And the kids that are in elementary school now will be in middle school. And so this may feel like a delay to some people in the public. It may feel like a delay to people that are stakeholders in the community. But this is the fastest way to get a resolution for everyone. So I implore you guys to continue work down this path.
Mr. Rooney, I just, I appreciate your comments and I agree with you. As you said, I think we're seeing a lot of head nods over there. I didn't see anybody say no, that this isn't something we can't continue to discuss. For us, as you heard, time is of the essence. So if this is something that we could move fairly rapidly on both sides, I hate hearing that we're losing potential new community members with children that are going elsewhere because they don't have a place to go. So I would, I would request that we could, we could move this along as fast. And if it means that the attorneys and this, you know, and superintendent and the town manager need to lead the charge and bring it back to their respective boards or however we have to have that meeting, whatever is the fastest path to, to come to a decision on, on the proposal, I think we would be certainly grateful for that.
Maybe something to consider is maybe setting a timeline for a follow-up. And that follow-up can just be that the, the parties can meet with me to let me know where things are. And if everyone's in agreement with that, that way we can, you know, have a third party to say, all right, you guys aren't really moving in a meaningful way towards resolving this. I'm gonna go ahead and set this for scheduling a follow-up meeting. And if you're moving forward, then there's no need to schedule that meeting. So if you guys wanna, with the holidays coming up, if you want to pick a date, you know, or a number of days to have a follow-up, I think that'd be a good way to start, to set a deadline, report back to me, see what progress you've made. If I find there's been no progress, we'll reconvene a new hearing and have everyone come back.
So Derek, may I suggest maybe because of the holidays are coming up, I don't know what the Town feels, but perhaps the attorneys can speak maybe right after we come back in January? Because you know, the school district will be closed for about two weeks in December. And then, of course, we have Thanksgiving, we have the holidays, so I don't know if that's.
Let me ask you.
I would encourage us to do it, you know, before the holidays.
Before the holidays to have that touch base?
Absolutely.
How about, what, when do you have your, your next meeting?
Seventeenth.
November 17th.
November 17th. And when does the school board have their next meeting?
December 1st.
December 1st. So how about this? How about the attorneys, key staff members get together, start working out, and then at each your respect, your next respective meeting, whether it's the 17th or your first meeting in December, have a report back to the councils, you know, to your boards, saying, this is the timeline we're working on. This is the exchange of information we're working on. And then we're gonna continue to meet through the end of this year and into the beginning of next year. Because you're gonna need, there's gonna need to be agreement on some of the basic terms of your current ILA, because you're gonna be revising that for certain. What the terms of lease are. All these things need to be worked out and the exchange of information and processes. So that gives you a couple of weeks now to, to work between the attorneys, and then the attorneys can report back to their respective boards.
By November 17th, like November 16th, we should have something, at least an idea.
Yes, absolutely.
Derek, just a small housekeeping matter.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
The ILA calls for the ad hoc committee to continue meeting, and I think we have a meeting scheduled in a week and a half. I would just ask the two councils if they could discuss potentially suspending that while these conversations are going on without being in violation of the ILA.
We'll just do a quick amendment or something like that.
Very good. All right, thank you.
I, I would like to say, thank you, Derek, for your facilitation. That's been wonderful in helping us. But I really want to say thank you to the Town. The ability to come in with a, an offer and something that's viable, that we can think about and discuss and chew on and make, you know, perhaps provide a counteroffer, I think that's, that really shows a lot of collaboration, a lot of thinking, and will definitely, I think, lead us to that path of resolution. So I know that Dr. Fallon and Mr. Ribeau, myself, Deputy Superintendent, and everybody else on the team really truly appreciates you coming with something on the table. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all very much. If you need anyone to, you know, crack heads, let me know in the meantime. But my hope is that you don't need to do a joint meeting, that there's no need for further mediation, that you guys can work down a path and hopefully get something back in front of your two boards as soon as possible for everyone. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.